Then, let's see, council is now in session. If you will, please join Councilmember Shrubik in the flag slip.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's okay. Councilmember Shrubik. Mayor Baker.
Here.
Councilmember Marshall.
Present.
Councilmember Danuski.
Here.
Councilmember Curtis.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Herbig.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Somebody got their agenda open because mine is not opening. So, next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda, and if there is no objections, the agenda will stand approved as written. All right. Hearing none, the agenda stands approved. So, next item on the agenda is the presentations. And Police Chief Horvath, if you would please introduce Police Officer Andrew Vabine.
That is correct. I'd like to introduce to council Officer Andrew Vabine. He's our newest officer in the city of Kenmore and the first one that I've recruited to the city. He began shortly after September 1st, and Andrew has been with the sheriff's office for approximately four years. He comes to us from the Metro Unit where he patrolled downtown Seattle area primarily, but any other metro corridors around the greater Seattle area also. Prior to that, Deputy Vabine came to us from the Department of Corrections where he served in the prison system, and I'll let him take over from here, say a little bit more about himself.
Hello. Name's Andrew Vabine. Nice to meet everyone. Just a little bit about me. I grew up in the Edmonds area. Went to, basically through high school there in the area, grew up playing sports. Went to Central Washington University where I transferred to play football there and started my college career there, took one law and justice course, and about 20 later, here I am.
Welcome.
Thank you.
We're looking forward to having you serve in Kenmore. I think he's be a valuable addition to our police force.
I think he is.
You've got some high standards to live up to, and we look forward to seeing you meet them.
That's what I've been told, but Metro, you got a lot of diversity there, so I've got a lot of good experience there. Think Kenmore will be good for me.
Good. We're looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, John Vincenti, city engineer, introducing Tobin Bennett Gold, a traffic engineer.
Good evening, mayor council. I am quite happy to introduce you to our new traffic engineer, Tobin Bennett Gold. He comes all the way from Tucson, Arizona, and he started out right up the go. First day, I've given him all my cars. I had quite a lot sitting in my inbox that I couldn't handle, and he's been addressing those things real quickly. He's got quite a bit of a background in traffic safety and data analysis, and we're just really great to have him here on board. I'll let him share more about his background with you.
Hi. Like John said, my name is Tobin Bennett Gold. When I was considering this position, I spoke to a mentor of mine, and he said, "A day when it's 110 degrees outside is a bad day to decide if you want to live in Washington." In Tucson, Arizona, I graduated from the University of Arizona in civil engineering. I've worked at Arizona Department of Transportation as well as Pima County Department of Transportation. I've done a lot of traffic safety in my work as well as transportation analytics. I've done some construction management, and I'm really excited to be a part of Kenmore now.
Thank you. Don't get too excited because all days are not like today. As a matter of fact, this time of year, that's kind of rare, from now until June. But you'll find that we are a lot more stable client than Tuxen is.
I'm overdue for some rain.
There you go. You will have your fill.
Plenty of rain.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And whatever he's got for you, you got a few to. All right. Next item on the agenda is resources addressing homeless crisis, including low-barrier shelters. Kira Zylstra from Acting Director of All Home.
Mr. Mayor and council, this is a presentation that follows along with issues you're considering in this evening's agenda, and we're happy to hear from King County's program. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Kira Zylstra, and I'm Acting Director for All Home, here to give you an overview of the strategies and interventions addressing homelessness across our entire county. All Home is a part of King County. We're actually situated within the Department of Community and Human Services, but we're also uniquely positioned as the continuum of care lead for Seattle-King County, which is a specific HUD designation to ensure that as a community, we are following the HUD regulations and including our community in our planning in how we address this crisis. So, giving you a bit about the framework that we're following to address the crisis. As you know and imagine, the King County experience of homelessness is far more reaching than we'd like to see, and there's many strategies that are needed. This is not a one silver bullet kind of problem to address. We had a 10-year plan to end homelessness that ended in 2015, and though we did not end homelessness in those 10 years, we see those 10 years as a success. More than 40,000 units of housing was created, more than 8,000 people were housed during that time. But in 2015, we pivoted to a four-year strategic plan to be more actionable and set really time-bound goals in how we address this crisis, and we added a few more elements or emphasized a few more elements to how we address this goal. And across the continuum, we have set the specific goals to make homelessness rare, brief, and one time, meaning that as few people as possible experience homelessness over the course of the year, and that if somebody does experience a crisis, it is only a brief occurrence and does not repeat in the future. Some of the pieces that we built in more strongly in the last strategic plan than in the 10-year plan was ensuring that we are addressing racial disparities. We know that if you're African-American, you are five times as likely to experience homelessness in our county, and if you're Native American, you're seven times as likely to experience homelessness. So, we cannot address the crisis of homelessness without being explicit about the issues of disparities. In addition, we got very specific about having data-driven solutions. In 2015, we had an analysis done that was actually called out in the strategic plan to inform us of how we were performing as a community, make sure that we were digging into our data and results to know what is working and what do we need to scale up to see even more success. In addition, we had an overlay of ensuring person-centered solutions, being really collaborative, working across sectors and across systems to address the crisis, and ensuring that we are adopting a housing-first approach. Going to get into some specifics about what all of that means. As I mentioned, the crisis is obviously larger than it was years ago. We continue to see rising numbers of people experiencing homelessness in our county. We also have invested more, and so there's the obvious question of if we continue to invest more and more, why do we keep seeing these numbers rise? So, I think it's important to call out the community determinants of homelessness, not just in our county, but we see across the country that is leading to and contributing to these rising numbers. I'm sure you're all familiar with the point-in-time count, and I'll be talking about that in a little bit more in case you're not. But we are obligated by federal government and to help address trends in understanding the scope and scale of homelessness to, one night in a given year, do a visible estimation of the number of people experiencing homelessness. And this last year, there was 12,112 people estimated in that count, both sheltered and unsheltered across the county. And that's just one given night in King County. What we see across the entire year through our homeless management information system where data is collected from programs and services that are addressing this crisis is that nearly 30,000 people over the course of a year are experiencing homelessness. So, that one given night snapshot doesn't tell us enough about that scale, and so we do need to look at data throughout the course of the year. The 30,000 individuals that are entering our system every year, we do not have resources to address. And the determinants here show you a little bit about why those numbers continue to rise. In our community, we have half as much affordable housing available to people that are under 50% of the area median income than we did just 10 years ago. So, we continue to lose affordable housing at the same times as rents, as you know, are rapidly rising, and not just in the city of Seattle, but across the entire county. Other economic conditions, where there's high poverty, high unemployment rates, we have seen a growing inequity gap in incomes, and that is also contributing to rising homelessness. Areas with more Hispanic, baby boomer populations, single people, households also are associated with higher rates of homelessness, and places with lower mental health expenditures and lower access to the mental health services that people need also tend to see rising numbers of homelessness. So, these are just some examples. The transience, the last piece there, areas with more recently moved people associated with higher rates of homelessness. I think we can all agree, many, many people are moving to our community because of the opportunities that are here, the economic growth, and there is just a large number of people that are not benefiting from that economic growth in our community. This just gives you a snapshot, and I know we don't have a ton of time, and I do want to save time for questions, so I won't go into all the details, but hopefully this is helpful for you to look through afterwards. This shows the rising numbers of homelessness that actually is overlaid with the rising rents in our community, and you can see that there is that direct correlation between rising rents and experience of homelessness. This is just a snapshot of that decrease in affordable housing. That bottom line, the lightest blue color is the level of affordable housing available to people with the lowest incomes, and that percentage has not only decreased, but the number of units there has actually decreased in our community. This is a snapshot of that one given night, the annual point-in-time count. This is a combination of a visible count between the hours of 2:00 a.m. and 6:00 a.m. Many of you, many of your constituents are involved in that count. We had over 1,200 volunteers and people with lived experience helping to carry out this count because we do an estimation in every single census tract across the county. This is just a visible count, so during those hours, we do that early in the morning because we're not engaging with people, we're not asking questions, and we're not trying to find out more about each individual. We're trying to capture the best estimation we can while people are mostly in one place for that night. They've probably settled down for the evening. But in addition to that, we do a sample-based survey so that we can get more information about the demographics of people experiencing homelessness and a little bit about their experience and how they've gotten where they are to help inform the kinds of services that we need to help them. In this count, there's also capturing of data from the homeless management information system, so we know the sheltered information. This year was the first time in a number of years that we actually had a larger unsheltered population than our sheltered. And in the sheltered portion of this count, I'll specifically define that's emergency shelter, transitional housing, and safe haven. So, these are our time-limited programs that are really intended to help people move to a more permanent place. But this year, we estimated 6,320 people were unsheltered on that given night. That does include vehicles, people in tents and encampments, as well as people on the street and in abandoned buildings or places unmet for human habitation. Some specifics of the results, we did see a sharp increase in the number of people that lived in vehicles, and I'm sure many of you are not surprised by that. What you might be surprised by is that we saw a decrease in the number of people living in tents and encampments. This does not mean we should be celebrating and we're seeing huge success. It means we have a changing unsheltered population. Overall, the experience of unsheltered homelessness did rise about 15% compared to last year, but the overall experience of homelessness only rose by about 4%. Some of the reason for that is that we are seeing success in that count as well when we look at the trends year over year. From this year compared to last year, we saw a 31% decrease in veteran homelessness and a 22% decrease in youth homelessness, specifically unaccompanied minors under the age of 18. We do feel like we know the reasons for these declines, and we have had very concerted and targeted efforts to address these two populations in particular. We've had a lot of investment and support from our state government, from the Office of Homeless Youth on minors under 18. And for veterans, we've now for a number of years have had really strong investments from our federal partners and from our local partners and through King County and the Veteran Seniors and Human Services Levy. We took not only those targeted investments, but we built that with coordinated efforts across sectors, so people meeting weekly and using data, knowing the names and needs of every single veteran, every single minor, and taking action based on that information. That kind of activity is what is leading to results. A little bit more about what we learned in the survey. I did mention this at the very beginning, but people of color are far more likely to experience homelessness than white people in our community. In fact, 52% of people of color are experiencing homelessness as compared to 33% people of color across the county and the general population. Highest disparities, as I mentioned, are for black, African-American, Hispanic, Latino, and Native American communities. This just tells a little bit more about this. It is definitely an estimation when we look at the point-in-time count, and it is not a perfect enumeration, and so it's important to look at multiple data sources, but those disparities are repeated in every data source that we look at when it comes to homelessness. I also mentioned this, over the course of a year, we have far more people entering the homeless system than are experiencing homelessness on one given night or than we have the resources to support. So, really matching our housing resources and bringing back the level of affordability capacity that we once had in 2007 even, we need to get back to that place in order to address the crisis of people experiencing homelessness now, and we need to prevent homelessness for far more people to reduce that number of people that are falling into homelessness over the course of a year. So, this is a snapshot of those things. It is important that we're focused on all of these areas rather than just ensuring that we have crisis response and a shelter place for people to go at night and not just focused on preventing homelessness, but focused on those and at the same time, ensuring more resources to create pathways out of homelessness. This is a snapshot of the system. It is not easy to capture what the homeless system looks like in one picture, but wanted to give you a sense of these, all the pieces do come together. The problem is that they don't fall together easily if you are a person experiencing homelessness. Trying to find the resources that you need, trying to get to the place that you need to be to meet those needs is really not the easiest thing in the world, and that is the thing that we're trying to improve, is creating clear pathways for people to get to the services they need, ensuring flexible resources, and ensuring that we are going out to individuals where they are and meeting their needs in that way. This is a little bit about how we are trying to streamline. This is another very difficult thing to capture in a visible way, but this is a snapshot of what we call the coordinated entry system, which is our effort to try to make that pathway to housing more clear. If you are experiencing a crisis, that you know where to go and you know what resources will be available to you there. Before the coordinated entry system, individuals who are experiencing crisis did not have a place to go at night, were calling 30 to 40 shelters a day, calling a lot of places and filling out applications and information a lot of times. On average, we heard from people about 40 times. With coordinated entry, the idea is that you can go to one place, fill out your information one time, and certainly not get housing tomorrow. We know that we don't have the resource for that. Coordinated entry does not create housing of itself, but it does ensure that we can better capture people's needs and then target our resources to people that are in the greatest need. We're working on phasing that effort to make sure that we're not just asking everybody, everything about themselves to put them on a giant waitlist with not enough housing to serve everyone, but ensuring that we're asking a few questions right away to really understand who has the greatest needs, who's been outside the longest, who has the greatest vulnerabilities in terms of health and family needs, that we can quickly connect them to housing and ensure that we are offering other more flexible resources that aren't necessarily a housing unit to folks who may have other options. And that brings me to prevention or diversion. Again, we want to make sure that we're helping people as quickly as possible in their crisis. Diversion is a term that's used in multiple manners. There's law enforcement-assisted diversion, trying to support people from entering the criminal justice system when we can connect them with treatment and other services first. This diversion is diverting people away from the homeless system, that as soon as they're seeking crisis response, as soon as they're seeking shelter, we want to engage in creative problem-solving conversation and offer flexible financial resources so that they can go anywhere that offers stable housing outside of the homeless system, preventing the experience of trauma, maybe moving from shelter to shelter, maybe getting stuck in transitional housing for a long time, but getting into stable housing quickly. It also preserves those homeless housing resources for folks that have no other options. So, that's something we're looking to do at every entry point, every place that people are seeking services so that those skilled case managers and counselors are there to offer that service and that the flexible financial assistance is available in those situations. Rapid rehousing is another key intervention. We cannot just rely on the homeless housing units that we build because that takes time and of course, takes a lot of money. Rapid rehousing is seeing great success in our community, and what it is is a combination of services, case management, and employment assistance, and housing location as well in particular, ensuring that we're connecting people with resources, housing in the community, whether it's public or private housing, but mostly the private market housing, and offering some financial assistance for a flexible time period. So, somebody may just need three months of assistance, somebody may need up to a year of assistance, but really helping them to support in that housing so that they move to the stable place that they can stay as quickly as possible, and then services will decrease over time. We see even more success in this program than in transitional housing. This is about 70% of people that enter rapid rehousing exit the program in stable housing, and it's a little lower than that in transitional housing right now, and it means that people are in permanent housing more quickly. So, we need to ensure this array of resources and that we're not just looking at one kind of intervention. I mentioned the data because we are looking at the data. The performance of our system is really, really critical. I just want to highlight this. If you are a data fan, you should go to the All Home website because we have public-facing dashboards, interactive dashboards that really tell you more about the performance of our system, the experience of homelessness in the community. These are the five of the core metrics that we're looking at, and this is a system-wide snapshot view of this, that across all interventions, shelter, transitional housing, rapid rehousing, permanent supportive housing, the exits to permanent housing is about 35%. As you might imagine, from shelter is where the lowest percentages are, so if you look at this intervention by intervention, you would see that shelter exits are a little lower than this, about 15, 20%, but when you get to permanent supportive housing, exits to permanent housing are about 95%. So, we need to know how each intervention is performing and how that's contributing to our overall success. So, the work ahead is quite a bit, and you're all involved in that, I know, in many, many ways. What we try to do to tell the broader community about how to get involved is to say hello, understand that every neighbor is our neighbor in our community and in need, and treating everyone as our neighbor is really critical, so simply saying hello to people that you see that may be in crisis or may have a greater need. Share your time. I always say, just give your time, give your money, give whatever you can. United Way is always a great outlet for that, a great way for people to get connected to any type of volunteering they may be interested in. Speaking up, being able to get educated about this issue, and speak up to your elected officials, your state and federal partners that we know we need support from because we can't do this work locally alone. And then renting or hiring. We need to talk to landlords, we need to talk to employers, people that can rent their places to people experiencing homelessness now through rapid rehousing, and using outlets like jobs connect through United Way to connect people to employment. So, those are a very quick snapshot. There was a lot I wanted to cover in a little amount of time, but I'd like to just simply open it up because I'm sure there are specific pieces you have questions about.
Questions. So, right now, today, I'm seeing that approximately 236,000 King County households earn less than 50% of adjusted median income. Of that, 128,000 homes are affordable at this income, so there's a huge disparity there. And I notice in your demographics, you're sort of lightening the phrase senior by calling them baby boomers. They're not baby boomers.
Yeah.
They're older than baby boomers, and they are boomers that are coming of age, and they're going to be the largest percentage of our homeless population.
I will say, that's not my language. That's a research piece, but yes, absolutely. This is a huge issue.
And you can't retrain them. You can't get them jobs. And so, what are you going to do? I mean, we have literally thousands of people on the street tonight that are trying to make a decision. Do they take their medicine or do they eat?
Yep.
So, what are you doing with this organization and homelessness to help our senior population?
It's a really important question. I appreciate you highlighting that. The age is certainly a part of the vulnerabilities that we're looking at for people who are experiencing homelessness tonight now, and we're doing those assessments for coordinated entry. Because we don't have a resource for everyone, we do have to prioritize, and age is a piece of that, the length of time people have experienced homelessness, and the level of health or behavioral health needs that they have. Those are all really critical, but the biggest thing that we can do to truly address the fact that we don't have enough resources is to get more resources. It simply takes more housing. We absolutely need to match the level of housing that we have to the level of need, and what you're pointing out is exactly that, and there's no getting around the fact that we do not have the kind of housing that we need.
Any other questions? Councilmember Curtis.
Question on the system performance dashboard. What are the two last columns, homeless entries and utilization rate?
Great question. Yes, the others are pretty obvious. Homeless entries is, was somebody actually literally homeless at the time of entering a program? Given that the programs that we're applying these metrics to are programs that are specifically funded to serve our homeless community, we want to know that people entering those programs are literally experiencing homelessness. That will never be 100%, and that's okay because there are people who are fleeing domestic violence or in precarious situations that are still extremely vulnerable, and we want to serve now, but all in all, we want to be closer to a higher number in that metric. And utilization rate is how full are our units? Are we using every resource to the greatest extent that we possibly can? Again, it's difficult to get to exactly 100, 100% of the time because of turnover and the time that it takes to fill units, but we want to get better and better at ensuring that we can fill those units really quickly and lessen the time that it takes to fill.
Thank you.
On the housing piece, Mayor, I'd like to point out also that, I'm not sure if anyone at this table is involved, the Regional Affordable Housing Task Force.
I'm one of the co-chairs.
Excellent. So, that body of work is not disconnected from the issue of homelessness and incredibly important.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you very much for the presentation, and I have a couple of questions that, just if you can give me a little bit of insight on how you view it. So, knowing that there's a significant pipeline supply of multifamily units coming on and planned for in Seattle and some of the surrounding communities, I'm just wondering how you view that in the context of what you do here, and then also, since I know that rent increases, you use that as a metric, performance. So, if rents decrease, do you anticipate a decrease in homelessness?
I think it depends on multiple factors. So, it certainly will lessen the pressure on the system and allow us to have more flexibility in working with landlords. We have a program that was historically called the Landlord Liaison Program, and we're adapting that now based on the current environment, trying to pivot it from trying to do everything of case management and landlord recruitment to just really focusing on a business-to-business model with landlords. That effort becomes easier, not easy, but becomes much easier when there's not this kind of pressure on the market, when landlords really need us to help fill units quickly and there's not such a highly competitive environment. But it doesn't happen quickly and doesn't happen overnight. To your first question, I think it's really critical that every time we're talking about housing, whether it's private market housing or affordable housing in general, we talk about the impact on homelessness, and we talk about where units can directly target people experiencing homelessness because that is going to have the biggest impact on how quickly we see a change in the trend line of people experiencing homelessness. We do need affordable housing overall. We need it broadly, and we need much, much more of it, but if we don't do more to specifically target a portion of those units to people experiencing homelessness, we're not going to see a change very quickly.
Okay. Thank you. And with, knowing that supply does impact, I mean, it's obviously basic economics, but knowing that the supply of housing units will impact the rents and the cost of housing, is that, do you focus at all on working with local municipalities or anybody that's in the zoning world to make it easier to increase the supply? And I bring that up because I just feel like that's hitting it way up front rather than waiting at the long ladder end, and I'm just wondering if there's any focus or effort that you see going into that and resources that maybe go into that process.
Yeah, that is absolutely a huge need. I haven't, myself in my role, been as directly involved in that, but of course, there's a lot of efforts within the city of Seattle and other municipalities and strong zoning conversations, and the supply side is really critical. We need to look at all strategies, all interventions that will help increase supply, and sometimes that requires changes at the state level, and sometimes that we can do these things locally, but I think we need to explore all of those solutions, and there's certainly a lot of that work happening. The more we can do that together and look, all municipalities coming together and exploring those tools collectively to have broader impact on a larger scale, the better.
Thank you.
Councilmember Curtis.
Question on the disparities slide. Is... Is, are the elderly represented in a higher percent than you'd expect in the general population?
That's a good question. I don't have that offhand. That is data that we have, and I can pull that up for you. It's not one of the highest disparities, or I would know it offhand. But yeah, it is an important piece for us to continue to look at.
Councilmember Sherwood.
I have a set of questions related to the low-barrier shelters, which I think we're going to be talking about in a little while. So I'll just, I'll rattle them off and then can repeat them if we forget. So I was curious which other cities have low-barrier shelters? And be curious to hear a little bit more about the handling of drugs, alcohol, and weapons because we've got a little bit of mixed messages. So I just want to make sure I understand the policy. And if they're, assuming that there are other cities with low-barrier shelters, do any of them regulate where within a city those low-barrier shelters go or not? And then, on the policy side again, I was curious if there are any low-barrier shelters that actually allow people to be there during the day? So that was just the last question.
Generally speaking to all of these questions, you can find a program that does everything. So across different cities and across even our own community, there's many different types of shelter, and there's different ways that communities are implementing this really critical crisis intervention. There are other cities that have low-barrier shelters. There are cities that regulate where and have different policies about, you know, distance from different other locations, and some that don't. And even within a community, they might have, within a county, different cities handling it differently. So there's just a lot of variety. This is a crisis that there's no easy answer to, and we actually work quite a bit with peers across the country because we're always trying to learn from each other and ask exactly those questions. What are you doing, what's worked, and what hasn't? There are types of shelter that are low-barrier and allow people to be there during the day. Typically, what we call that is enhanced shelter, 24/7 shelter, ensuring that it's not just a mat overnight where people have to come and go in the night and the morning, but being able to keep and store their belongings there. Some of the biggest barriers that we've heard to people coming into shelter, not unique to King County but true across the country, is not being able to store your belongings, not being able to bring in your pets or your partners, and ensuring that it's a safe place that people can go, whether past experience, past trauma, or even health concerns have prevented people from coming into shelter. So we're exploring all of those things. Low barriers truly reinforcing the principle of housing first, of ensuring that we're bringing people to a safe place that they can come in, that they will say yes to because it actually meets their needs and addresses those concerns about what other places may not have offered them in the past. And we do see a lower rate of use of drugs and alcohol in shelter than outside of shelter, in any kind of shelter. So simply having a safe place to be does reduce the use of substance. In terms of the specific policies around handling drugs, alcohol, weapons, I'm not the best person to speak to that. I know I'm replacing Mark Ellerbrook from King County tonight, and given that he is the one that actually puts out the contracts to agencies, he could talk better about the policies. But really, again, the concept is ensuring a harm reduction space, a place where we're encouraging people to regain stability and creating a place where they can connect easier with the services and treatment that they need. So the county is striving, and the cities of Seattle's doing the same, and many other cities, of bringing the services that people need to these locations and ensuring that that is providing the kind of support that people need for long-term stability.
Councilmember Smith.
I'll follow up on the low-barrier aspect. So you talked about in the low-barrier shelters, the need to have a place where people feel safe, and I can totally understand that. I would like to ask, though, if that's the case, why would you be allowed to bring a weapon into a low-barrier shelter?
The weapons piece, I really can't respond to because I'm not sure what the policies are on that.
We've actually been told that as long as it's not visible, you can bring a weapon into a low-barrier shelter. And so to me, that kind of shoots it in the face as far as saying that's a safe space. And then I guess I'd follow up by saying, if you're also not doing a felony warrant check, wouldn't that also be putting, basically putting other people at risk in a scenario where, as you just said, that you want it to be a safe place where they can feel safe and comfortable?
I mean, the reality is that there is a far less likelihood of reoccurring, of committing a crime in the future if you have a safe place to be and if you are connected to the housing and supports that you need. We have had low-barrier shelters in our community. We have had, other communities have implemented this model, and there's not a huge, there's not been increases of crime reported, there's not been the kinds of things that people assume takes place, just given past history. The concept behind low-barrier shelter is also the reason for things like banning the box and not looking just at past criminal history because it's not actually a determinant if you can be stable in housing. So the concerns are real, and that's the importance of making sure that we have services available and staff support to address a crisis before it occurs, address a crisis quickly, and create the kind of stable environment that everybody's looking for.
I have a question. Do you think it's reasonable for a community to have expectations of people that come to their community?
Can you say that again?
If you're going to invite people to come to your community, do you think it's reasonable to have a baseline set of expectations about what human behavior is and what we can expect as a community?
Yeah, I think that it's important that we all are, we are all part of this community right now. I live just outside of the Kenmore city limits. I think that we all have expectations as neighbors and community members, but if we're not welcoming our neighbors and community members as they are, we're not going to thrive as an entire community. And it's really important that we provide those safe environments for people to be able to turn their lives around, be able to connect with the services that they need. But it's a really critical expectation that we all hold to create that kind of welcoming environment.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Marshall.
Do you have any general statistics or, and/or thoughts, statistics preferable on how many violent events would occur at shelters or low-barrier shelters in particular?
I do not. Like I mentioned, there has not been extensive studies or research done on this. But what we've heard from across the country, what we've seen as these programs are implemented, we're not the first to do anything like this. We have not seen dramatic rises in crimes, and certainly not violent crimes.
Yeah, that part, you seem to be certain about. In terms of a study then of shelters in the surrounding communities, you're saying that you don't see an increase in the crime rate when shelters go in. Is that right? Or close to that?
Yes, close to that, yeah.
Yes.
Then take the worst-case scenario, which we do have to think about, but is probably always far-fetched, but sometimes not as far-fetched as we'd like it to be, when in occasional horrible instances it does happen. If there are sex offenders who are forbidden from being around children by the court, and been court-ordered, and yet a shelter permits a child to be residing in a shelter in the same space with a parent or with the permission of a parent, and there's a parent who, for other reasons, many reasons, isn't able to watch the child all the time or is subject to the manipulations of a predator, how does, how might a shelter try to prevent that or address that? How should we look at that worst-case scenario?
Honestly, the availability of services, the availability of people there to address crisis before it occurs. The low-barrier shelter does not supersede any federal, state law, and everybody in this effort is striving for a safe and healthy community for everyone. I think that is first and foremost, the most important thing. And this isn't always the best news, but the truth is, these crimes are occurring in our communities everywhere. And people are far less likely to commit a crime, to be engaged in criminal activity, when they have a safe place to be and their basic needs are met. So we do have people in every part of our, every reach of the county right now that, where crimes are occurring, and by responding to community need, I think we lessen that.
One more. And is there an average, like the number of staff who are there to help people safe or to monitor people or to deal with disputes and altercations if they occur?
It depends on the shelter model. So like I said, there's some that are enhanced 24/7 shelter, and they're going to have a different staffing and services model than a night-by-night, mats-on-the-floor-type shelter. So it totally depends on how the program is being implemented.
Councilmember Sherwood.
Just a follow-up. I know you do a lot of work nationally, but do you know which of our surrounding communities just close by have low-barrier shelters?
I, we're still working on definitions. People are moving towards housing first, and so there's still an array of shelters, even in the term of low barrier in our community. Again, I think that's a better question for Mark Ellerbrook, who oversees the contracts for these individual shelters.
Then I guess, and now your comment made me think of a slight variant on an earlier question, I guess. I mean, we've been under the impression that both King County and Seattle funding of the low-barrier shelters, or at least the one we've been in communication with, have, for lack of a better word, significant strings attached to the definition of low-barrier shelter. And I guess we were kind of under the impression, or at least I was, that there was a pretty solid definition of what that meant to both the county and the city.
It's an evolution to get there. So, you know, we've had many shelters in place. We have thousands of shelter units across the community that have had a set of rules in place for a while. We're trying to get to a place where we are implementing housing first more broadly and at scale. And so getting to that place takes a little bit of time.
So, there is a small percentage of homeless that don't necessarily want permanent housing. How are you addressing that with your committee on homelessness?
I would offer a friendly amendment and say that there are a number of people that don't want to accept a service when offered today. We, when doing the survey on the point-in-time count and other surveys that we've done, 98% of people say that they would take safe, affordable housing if offered. What we're offering people does not always match what they want. And that gets back to the shelter barriers, it gets back to the lack of affordable housing available. But it is true that people on a given day may be refusing a service that's being offered to them. Rarely is it the exact service that they need in that very moment. And we need to get closer to a place where we actually have the services that people need in the moment that they need them. And that simply gets to the large gap in resources compared to the need.
Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. All right, next item on the agenda. Whereas, diaper need, the condition of not having a sufficient supply of clean diapers to ensure that infants and toddlers are clean, healthy, and dry, can adversely affect the health and welfare of infants, toddlers, and their families. Whereas, national surveys report that 1 in 3 mothers experience diaper need at some time while their children are less than 3 years of age, and 48% of families delay changing a diaper to extend their supply. And whereas, the average infant or toddler requires an average of at least 50 diaper changes per week over 3 years. And whereas, there are no government assistance programs for the purchase or provision of diapers, and a monthly supply of diapers can cost as much as 6% of a full-time minimum wage worker's salary. Therefore, obtaining a sufficient supply of diapers can cause economic hardship to families. And whereas, a supply of diapers is generally an eligibility requirement for infant and toddlers to participate in childcare programs and quality early education programs. And whereas, the people of Kenmore recognize that addressing diaper need can lead to economic opportunity for the state's low-income families and can lead to improved health for families and their communities. And whereas, the city of Kenmore is proud to be home to various community organizations that recognize the importance of diapers in helping provide economic stability for families and distribute diapers to poor families through various channels. Now, therefore, I, David Baker, Mayor of the city of Kenmore, do hereby proclaim the week of September 24th through September 30th as diaper need awareness week in the city of Kenmore, and encourage the citizens of Kenmore to donate generously to diaper banks, diaper drives, and those organizations that distribute diapers to families in need to help alleviate diaper need in the city of Kenmore and environs. We have a great organization just across the street, on the other side of the post office, that does just that, and we certainly encourage you to support them. Yes.
Hi, I'm East Side Baby Corner.
Yes, you are. I'm sorry. Yes, Claudia Malone. East Side Baby Corner, right across the street.
We are, we are right across the street. My name is Claudia Malone. I'm chairman of the board for East Side Baby Corner. We have been doing this for about 28 years. Started 28 years ago when our founding director discovered that there were children coming through their pediatric practice that did not have basic needs, did not have formula, did not have diapers, did not have car seats. And so Karen founded this organization. We've been doing this for 28 years. North Shore, we've been here for just over a year. We're really happy, and he's right, we're about a block that way. And 2017, we're really happy that we gave out, and I have to use my notes, 84,000 diaper changes just here at the North Shore hub. In 2017 overall, North Shore filled 8,257 orders for children in need of essential goods. And we do that with a part-time staff member and volunteers who do most of the work. EBC overall, last year with diapers, gave out 955,000 diapers worth about $4.5 million. Diapers are not cheap, and I really appreciated what the mayor said about people who are deciding between taking a prescription and buying food. Same thing happens with parents who are choosing between food, diapers, rent, and everything else that's going on. And it is a big need, and there are no state programs. You can't buy diapers with food stamps, and so it's a real challenge for parents to do this. So we thank the city of Kenmore for your support. We are really happy to be part of this community. We appreciate your support, and we appreciate the proclamation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're very proud to have you as part of this community. And last year I was there and cut the ribbon, and I'm glad you're here. You do fill us definitely. The next one is for a really important business in our community. And if you don't know about this business, I urge you to get the book, and you can find out about Leslie's Tricycle and what happened. It's a tremendous story of a company that we are very fortunate to have in our community, of how they started back in '46 and how they persevered about landing seaplanes on glaciers. It's a fascinating read. If you have the opportunity, I would suggest you get a copy. So, whereas, with Kenmore Air's headquarters and operations in Kenmore since the 1940s, the seaplane is a distinctive and emblematic feature of the city. And whereas, Kenmore Air Harbor is the largest air harbor in the United States, serving passengers traveling on scheduled and chartered flights in the U.S. and Canada. And whereas, seaplanes are featured in a variety of ways in Kenmore, in the city logo, the name of the local craft brewers' IPA, the community gathering place called The Hanger, and the name of the soon-to-be-open downtown restaurant. And whereas, Seaplane Pilots Association, a nonprofit international organization founded in 1972, is the largest organization- organization founded in 1972, is the largest organization of its kind with over 5,000 members. And whereas, the association is the primary advocacy group responsible for promoting and protecting the waterflying community, and the Washington State Seaplane Pilots Association is a key statewide organization. And whereas, the Seaplane Pilots Association will hold its second annual member trip and meeting in Kenmore in Seattle, October 1st through 6th, 2018, with the first member trip having taken place in Como, Italy in 2017. And whereas, the City of Kenmore is proud to welcome the Seaplane Pilots Association to the seaplane capital of the U.S. Now, therefore, I, David Baker, Mayor of the City of Kenmore, Washington, on behalf of the City Council, am pleased to proclaim the week of October 1st through 6th, 2018, to be Seaplane Week in the City of Kenmore, and I urge all citizens to join with the City Council in this observance. Mr. Banks, I think you are probably here for this. And we're sure glad to have you as part of our...
Thank you, Mayor. Press, am I answered?
You should add that.
Thank you.
About 60 pilots here. Bring up a group of about 100, starting Monday. Is it possible? Thank you. Thank you and the whole family for coming. We really appreciate your involvement in Kenmore. And I cringe a little bit every time I drive by Boeing Field, but that's okay. I understand it's a totally different operation. But it's still called Kenmore. Thank you. All right. Next item on the agenda, citizen comments. It's an opportunity to express your views on issues that are important to you and to the community. We ask you, please, limit your comments to three minutes, and it'll appear on the screen behind me. And if the clerk will please call the first person.
Carol Jones-Tysor.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, I am Carol Jones-Tysor, a member of the Kenmore-Bothel Interfaith Group. My church is Bothels Emmanuel Presbyterian Church.
Excuse me, which city do you live in?
Pardon?
Which city do you live in?
Bothels.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. We have joined with the KBIG organization to enlarge our voice on the subject of the homeless and the cold weather shelter. I am the person at my church that has dispensed the food cards and the gas cards and made the telephone calls trying to find shelter for homeless people. My church has charged me to make a public support declaration for Kenmore's Northlake Lutheran Church and our cold weather shelter, which my church will help to feed and host this year. I'm here to thank you and to remind you, as you debate your ordinance, that our group for the cold weather shelter and for KBIG have sent our representatives, Pastor Anya Hellman, Pastor Kristen Joyner, and Pastor Melanie Newfeld, to advocate for the homeless. We have tried to present you with facts that impressed upon you that homelessness is a regional crisis. We understand tonight you will be trying to participate in a local solution through a local ordinance regarding shelters. I'm not here to espouse a particular point of view. I am here actually to thank you for your support for the cold weather shelter and for Camp Unity. I appreciate the fact that you have allowed these organizations to exist, to succor the helpless in our community. I realize this is a regional problem because of my local work with my church. I'm here to tell you thank you and to wish you well as you debate your ordinance. Thank you very much for listening to me.
Thank you.
Paul Elbers.
Hi, my name is Paul Elbers. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and the council. I was here last week to present my case. And with the roadway, with all the entities of the City of Kenmore, North Shore Utility District, Fish and Wildlife, and all the people that we've had to hire, the cost overruns of this project have really put a burden on this association. And this roadway affects 79 residents and 21 homeowners. And I do live in Kenmore. So if you would take it into your consideration to waive the permit on this project, I would greatly appreciate it. So that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, there's nobody else signed up. We do have some people signed up for the public hearing, but no more at this time.
Okay. Yeah, those who signed up for the public hearing, that would probably be more applicable than general comments. So is there anybody else wishing to be heard for public comments? Karen, thank you for those of you who have commented. And we are acting on both those items tonight, so we appreciate your input. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Councilmember Smith?
Yes, I would request item C.
All right, we'll pull item C. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda minus item C, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The consent agenda minus item C stands approved. Item C, city manager, I mean, assistant city manager, or Mr. Hampson?
Yes, Brian Hampson, our Development Services Director, address this issue.
Good evening, Mayor, council. This issue is regarding the last public comment that we heard about the fees that are associated with the private bridge that's owned by association. Their request is to ask the council to waive the permit fees.
Councilmember Smith?
Yeah. It is a private road. I live on a private road. There are other residents in the city that live on a private road. And I know that it was explained to us that there were many residents, I believe 21 homeowners. The amount of the permit is 2,000 to 3,000, so it breaks out to maybe 2,000 or approximately $100, $125 a homeowner. I guess my point of this is, one, it was on the consent agenda, and we never had a discussion. It was brought at public comment, but we never talked about it. And I didn't think it was a reasonable precedent to be setting. If we waived the permit fees for these homeowners, then what do we have to stand on to deny other people with other projects that are in wetlands? There's a lot of wetlands in this city, and there's a lot of ones that are probably even more costly on a per-household basis than this one is in Lake More Estates. And so I guess, my question is, why does this one rise to the level of waiving it when we know that we've already talked about last week about our budget issues that, and we're probably going to be asking our citizens to pay more in taxes, and yet we're waiving a fee on a legitimate permitting project?
I think it might be more appropriate for the other council members to answer that question.
Enlighten me.
Councilmember Curtis?
Yeah, I'd actually be in agreement with what Councilmember Smith says, that if anybody can just come request an exception or waiving of the fee, it's difficult to say where will that limit be and what things will be waived. So I think consistency with our own regulations is important.
Any other comments? Okay. So I guess it comes down to, what does the council wish to do? Do we want to approve the waiver of fees or not? Councilmember Smith?
I will make a motion that we do not approve Agenda item number C to waive this permitting fee.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Councilmember Marshall?
And I don't recall that there was a case made of like particular financial hardship from the homeowners, other than what was presented before. And it seemed to me that was not an extraordinary case for a financial hardship where there might be a particularly vulnerable population or a unforeseen disaster-type scenario that, I'm not saying it would, but might merit consideration or something. But anybody correct me if I'm mistaken on that, if we didn't hear a statement as to real impactful financial hardships?
I don't know that's the case. I do know that they have a homeowners' association, and the homeowners' association maintains their private roads, and I believe there's two bridges. And I could be mistaken there, but I believe there are two. And I guess another area I'd liken this to is that there are a lot of condo associations in Kenmore. And I work with various condo issues, and homeowners' associations oftentimes have to have a special assessment that they have to pass because they have budget issues, they have capital expenditures that nobody anticipated, and sometimes it's lack of financial prudence, and other times it's just, things happen. And so I guess, I just look at this and I go, this has been, you know, I know about this bridge quite well from going back 15 years ago. And it's no surprise that it was an old bridge that was going to need work. What is a surprise is if a homeowners' association, Board of Directors, doesn't plan to budget for it.
I don't recall enough about the meeting to remember what the circumstances were for the request of the fee waiver. So... Pardon?
I'm sorry.
I didn't, I don't remember.
It was, I think, 2,000 to 3,000. Oh, $2,000 to $3,000 was the amount.
Yeah, but I don't remember what the circumstances were that led to.
I think it was the overall extraordinary costs that the bridge is costing the association. I heard in the range of $60,000 to $70,000 in total fees, not including permit fees that the association was going to have to come up with. And since it did affect so many houses and families, they came in and asked for a fee waiver.
Councilmember Shrubnik.
Well, I mean, given it is costly, and I would have to concur with Councilmember Smith and Curtis. And it sounds like they are going to need to go forward with the cost of actually doing the replacement, and therefore, the permit costs are kind of trivial relative to the overall cost of the project. So I am concerned about setting a precedent.
The permit costs are about 2,000, you said?
2,000 to 3,000 dollars, depending on how many reviews we go through.
All right. Any further discussion? So, motion before us then is to not grant the fee waiver. Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Danuski?
Yes.
Councilmember Curtis?
Yes.
Councilmember Marshall?
Yes.
Councilmember Shrubnik?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Herbig?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Motion passes to not waive.
Right, 7-0?
7-0, yeah.
All right. Next item on the agenda's public hearing, 18-0466, temporary homeless shelter. Mr. Urquhart, welcome back.
Thanks for having me back. I've welcomed some individuals to be up here with me to help me answer questions, and perhaps they can introduce themselves.
My name is Melanie Newfeld. I'm the director of Lake City Partners Ending Homelessness. Melanie Newfeld is my name, and I live in the Lake City area and have worked there for the last 12 years with people experiencing homelessness, working as a pastor at Seattle Mennonite Church, and collaborating with the larger community to figure out community solutions to end homelessness, thinking about our neighborhood as a small neighborhood and ways that, as a small community, we can figure out how to end homelessness. And over that time, I've connected with other congregations, over 25 congregations that have been willing to be a part of the solution.
Kevin Maguire, I'm the program manager for the North King County Winter...
Can you push the button?
Push. Hello. I'm Kevin Maguire. I am the program manager of the North King County Winter Shelter.
I didn't catch that. What, King County, Northern King County?
Yes.
And what was the rest?
The Winter Shelter. I'm the program manager of the Winter Shelter.
Winter Shelter, okay.
I trust that Kevin and Melanie will be able to answer a lot of the questions that were asked earlier, and further questions as well. And we also have Chief Horbath and Brian Hampson up here again. We're here because in July, we proposed an ordinance for temporary homeless shelters. And we weren't specific about low-barrier shelters. There weren't specific regulations for those in the ordinance. And based on your direction, we've done a couple of things since then. One is, with the other ordinance that we proposed before, we've added to that that only one shelter, as addressed in that ordinance or in that section, will be able to exist in the city per calendar year. So that's the one change we made to what was presented in July. We've also added to that a section specifically for low-barrier shelters. And I want to show you now on your screens, we'll show a slide, a really visually appealing slide, two colors. And I really worked hard on it. It talks about seven key differences that the low-barrier section of the ordinance has from the regular section of the ordinance. So we have all shelters, all temporary shelters that are not low-barrier. So we have all shelters, all temporary shelters that are not low-barrier, addressed in the first part, and that's what you've seen before. And then a low-barrier section, that's organization and content is very similar with these seven key differences. I'll go through those slowly, and then we can answer questions about those. The first is that, as opposed to the regular shelters part, the low-barrier shelter does not require warrant checks or sex offender checks for potential residents. Number two, the low-barrier shelters, as proposed, can only operate from October to April and for a maximum of 30 consecutive days. Number three, the low-barrier shelters have a maximum occupancy of 40 residents, as we're proposing. Their operating hours will be between 7:00 a.m. and 7:00 p.m. That's backwards. It should be 7:00 p.m. and 7:00 a.m., and that's how it is in the ordinance. Number five, no reentry after 10:00 p.m. in the low-barrier shelters. Number six, two staff members trained in de-escalation tactics will be required in the shelter for up to 30 residents, and between 31 and the maximum of 40 residents, three will be required. And number four, no children in the shelter at any time. And again, those are the differences in the second section of the ordinance from the first one that addresses other kinds of shelters. What questions do you have?
Questions. Councilmember Smith?
Actually, since the chief is here, I would appreciate if you could just give us all a, kind of a little background on what happens in a warrant check, because a significant part of this is there is no warrant check. So could you just tell us what, what do you do in a warrant check, and what happens, and what the difference is between like a misdemeanor versus a felony warrant check? Just, sorry, to put you on the spot on that?
No, that's certainly all right, Councilman. During a warrant check, we are running a name through the state and the federal databases to see if there's an active warrant in the system, whether that be for a felony crime or for a misdemeanor crime, and whether that warrant is extraditable, meaning that that home agency that issued the warrant actually wants that individual to be arrested and transported back to that home agency, excuse me, home agency. The difference between a misdemeanor crime and a felony, your felonies tend to be your more violent crimes. Those will be your rapes, your robberies, burglaries, felony assaults are your major assaults that result in serious injury or permanent injury. Homicides, these are your violent crimes. Your misdemeanor crimes would be your hit-and-runs, your driving while suspended, thefts of small value below $1,500, and the like. And so during a warrant check, any one of those violations could come up as an active warrant and could request or demand by us the arrest of the subject.
Okay. Is there any checks, when you do checks of individuals, and obviously this wouldn't be a place that, it apparently doesn't happen, but do they differentiate in the check process between a misdemeanor warrant and a felony warrant?
No. As soon as the name is entered into the system, it checks for all active warrants.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Shrubnik?
A follow-up on Councilmember Smith's question to you. My understanding, but I want some confirmation, I guess, is there is, for Level 2 sex offenders, there's actually a registry, and that is more publicly available? Is that something that could be separable, I guess is the question, from a warrant check?
Separable as far as the...
The process.
If the name is provided to us, or is run through the 911 Communication Center, then there is no separation. That name is run for warrants as well as sex offender registration. If the shelter chooses to go onto the King County website for registered sex offenders or the national website, then yes, they would only be checking for sex offenders in that process.
Councilmember Danuski?
Yeah, a funding question on the low barrier. So I know the King County money is tied to not having the warrant check or sex offender check. What I wasn't quite sure of is, can that money, that's kind of like a smaller drop in the bucket than the Seattle funding and all that, can, if we had those requirements here for the warrant and sex offender check, can you use like Seattle money here for the month that they're here and not use the King County money? Is that something you can separate?
So it's also the city of Seattle that is encouraging us in the low-barrier shelter, that philosophy, both King County and City of Seattle.
Encourage or require? Two totally different words.
They strongly encourage, and because, yeah, I have been, I have felt that the low-barrier shelter is a best practice because of their direction and their training. It has felt like that's something that is the best thing for our communities, to make sure that we're creating quick access for people into the shelter, so they're in a safe place at night. So one of the things, when we think about the warrants, and just wanted to respond quickly, the warrants and sex offenses, I would say that if there is behaviors that are pointing in a direction of, you know, someone that is unsafe for the community, that's certainly would trigger a need to call the police and be in conversation and communication around our concerns about somebody. So we're wanting to create safety, and if we see some behaviors that are, you know, at risk to the community, then that certainly would be a reason to be in conversation with the police, to do a warrant check or to be part of...
Okay. I don't feel like I completely got the answer, though. Does it, would you be able to be here using maybe not the King County money, but the Seattle money if there was a warrant and sex offender check required here?
That's a, yeah, it's a hard question, because I feel like the funding that we've asked for is dependent on the low-barrier way of being. So I haven't directly asked, but when I did, so there was another site, Our Lady of the Lake, that did breathalyzers. That's what they wanted as part of our shelter agreement. And we worked at it with them to really say, hey, you know, is there a way that we can create access for everyone? And so they were able to kind of regroup and change their philosophy. So we have been working with congregations in that way to say, let's just bring everyone inside, that that's the most important thing.
Councilmember Curtis, then Councilmember Shrubnik?
Different topic. What percent of the residents are from Kenmore? Do you have any information on that?
So we did kind of a question last year, which city are you from? And I believe it might have been two people from Kenmore and maybe another four people from Bothell area, so there might have been six at kind of the low number, but then there were, there were others that it was unknown where they came from, so it was hard to know for sure. But I would say, and then a couple of the Kenmore people continued to follow the shelter when it went, moved to Seattle and Shoreline.
Is that out of about 30 people for the denominator? Six out of how many?
Yeah, I would say 30 people.
Councilmember Shrubnik?
So I try not to perseverate too much, but I am trying to get some clarification. So I do want to make a distinction between warrants in general and Level 2 sex offenders, because there is a difference in how they are treated legally. And there are many people in our community that have, for like it or not, criminal backgrounds and warrants, and they live all around us. That said, registered sex offenders, Level 2 sex offenders that are registered are not allowed those same privileges. So I do think that there could be, I guess I would suggest that maybe we could, there could be some middle ground there. We have, one of the things we're struggling with is, or at least I am, and is the combination of the very low-barrier behavioral expectations, or I should say, background expectations, your behavioral expectations, I do understand that you have those, but the combination of that coupled with the location that we're looking at, which is, it's a very residential neighborhood, heavily populated by families, right in front of bus stops with tons of kids. So I mean, we, you know, our first responsibility is to our community, our greater community. We have, you know, a number of places, a number of churches that are in areas that, you know, I would have personally no problem with this. They're not that far away, for example, but I guess what I'm hoping is maybe we can come to some common ground, either on figuring out the location, regulating location, or further regulating the background behavioral piece, because the combination is, I'm struggling with, I guess.
So Chief, I've asked you this question before, I'm going to ask it again because we have a different set of folks in the audience here. But I know, I know you were around for last year when the cold winter, cold weather shelter was here. But I do know that your predecessor was tracking any kind of uptick or was trying to keep an eye on if there were any problems in the neighborhood. To the best of your knowledge, were there any major incidents? Was there a spike in crime? Was there, were there a lot of complaints called into the city? Anything you're aware of?
I don't have that data at this point, so I would have to do that research.
Councilmember Marshall?
It must be obvious, but the two staff members with the de-escalation tactics are presumed then to be on duty during those evening hours, the 7:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m., and obviously active and awake.
That's what we're proposing in the ordinance, and I don't know if there's more that you want to say about what happens at your shelter?
Yeah, absolutely. That's a great question. Not only will they be trained in de-escalation, but they will be trained in mental health, first aid, and we create a training program for our staff that watches for a multitude of behaviors. And, you know, and, you know, we can meet any problem that comes our way, essentially.
Deputy Mayor?
So, it's a question for Lake City. Do you folks schedule by the 30-day increment, or you schedule by the calendar month? Because I'm a little concerned by the 30-day requirement on there, seeing as the months of, just off the top of my head here, October, December, January, and March are all 31 days. Would a 30-day requirement be problematic if a church in our community was aiming for one of those months that had 31 days? Would that be a problem with your scheduling?
I think so. And I think the initial permit that was received was a three-month permit, and they had 30 days, North Lake Lutheran had 30 days left because of Camp Unity being at their site for almost two months. So that was where we only, knew that we could only operate the shelter for 30 days. So I did want to mention that it is restrictive to congregations that feel it's part of their mission of the church to respond to the most vulnerable in their communities. And if there are other congregations that want to be involved and offer their site as a hosting site, it is our goal to be able to offer shelter all year round, because that creates more predictability for people and more stabilization possibilities throughout the year, because the food and the sleep are so essential for folks to function during the day and to stay safe behaviorally and manage their mental health. Those, that predictability is so important for health. So just wanted to respond that even the, you know, to the limit 30 days feels restrictive.
Right. But if you had a choice between 30 and 31?
Right.
You'd go with 31, I assume?
I would go with 31.
Okay, thank you.
So, Mr. O'Quart, a couple of questions for you. In the staff report, you say that we're, this is meaning the Kenmore 20-Year Vision, Item Number 9, that offers diversity of housing types, provide a choice of attractive living accommodations for all residents. Is that what was, what you're recommending?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
Well, you're saying all residents, and I think this is pretty much a transient population. So I'm trying to look at why you cited this as a reason that we're doing it.
It's a good question. It's something that I can look at again to see if that's what we're trying to accomplish with this.
Chief, in this ordinance, the first part of it, all the whereas's, on the first page, the last whereas, RCW 31.21.915-2, states of the city or town may not enact an ordinance or regulation or take any other action that imposes conditions other than those necessary to protect the public health and safety, and does not substantially burden the decisions and actions of religious organizations regarding the location of housing or shelter of homeless persons on property owned by the organization. So if, as an elected official, our primary responsibility, or one of them, is to pride for the safety of our community, and you're the police chief in our community, how much will this affect your officers and how they conduct their business for that month?
I'm not sure how to answer that, sir. My officers will continue to do their work as prescribed by calls for service and make contacts as they have reason to do so legally. If they see suspicious behavior anywhere in the city, whether that be near the shelter or elsewhere in the city, they will take the appropriate enforcement action that's determined by the circumstances.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I noticed, Mr. O'Quart, that in your key differences, you don't mention weapons. Is there a reason?
Yeah, and that's because I think both sections read the same concerning weapons, that both types of shelters would require a code of conduct that outlaws weapons. So it's not a difference.
Okay.
As written.
So the fact that they're not doing a weapons check, they're just asking, doesn't seem, doesn't make any difference then, right? Just asking is good enough rather than requiring a check?
So, again, both require a code of conduct where residents agree to not have weapons?
Right. You're asking, you're not checking. You're not physically checking for weapons, you're asking whether they have it. You're relying on them to answer the question truthfully.
That's how the ordinance is written, and again, the shelter may decide to check or to ask, but you're correct that that's how it's written.
I'm also curious, what happens after 10:00 p.m.? If somebody comes into the shelter with drugs or alcohol and consumes them and decides at 9:30, 10 o'clock, they don't want to be there? They can just free to go and wander the community then at that point, correct?
I think we have it set out that we will have people transported back to a bus line if they want to leave.
I'm seeing head shake no back there, but, okay, so...
Pastor Anya?
We would, someone would be called not to take them to the bus line, but to take them to...
Brother, how do you?
Can I go to this one?
Yes.
Someone would be called not to take them to the closest bus line, but to take them to where they, where they are trying to go, as long as it's within a reasonable. So for example, last year, I was the on-call person, and I would be happy to do that again. And when I, I was only called twice during the night, and one of the times, well, and so I took them to Kirkland was one of the times, to the Bus Central place there, and one of the times, I think, was to Lake City. So it's not, we're not just dropping them off at the bus stop in Kenmore. We're dropping them off where they would take the bus typically, so.
Okay, thank you. That's, I think, all the questions I have at this point. Okay, thank you. That's, I think, all the questions I have at this point. Councilmember Marshall.
Weapons question brings up, I'd maybe like to hear your response to how that usually shakes out in shelters. Just ask for weapons, or it's a general understanding, or just your general thoughts on how it actually is played out?
Yeah, I just want to paint a real quick picture here. The people who are going to be utilizing our shelter, there was the All Home presentation earlier about coordinated entry and how this is a, a bigger program than just a shelter. So, the folks that are going to be staying here, we will know them for the most part. We will have made contact. Our, in, in our program, we have our drop-in center, we have all these community partners. You know, our goal is to get the people that are coming to shelter housed, okay? So we know these, you know, we're going to know these people. And these guest agreements that we have, these are very serious. And we create an environment that's, we police ourselves, they police themselves. You know, other guests are holding other guests accountable. Like this is, you know, we want to empower people to take this seriously and take the opportunity to find housing very seriously. You know, weapons are right out. If you have a weapon, or, you know, we feel you're dangerous, as Melli talked about, you know, contacting the proper authority. If there's a dangerous situation, or something's unraveling, and we feel with our training, we know what we're looking at here. People are dangerous, or other people are in harm's way. But we will confiscate drugs, and we'll flush them, we'll do whatever we need to do. So, I guess what I'm saying is, you know, this is not a bunch of blank, this isn't a criminal issue. It's a homeless issue. These aren't blank-faced criminals sneaking in to Kenmore. These are people that we, while I get the fear, and I get, and it's reasonable, and there probably are some criminals, right? Like, it is what it is. But, you know, these are people we're attempting to work with on a greater scale than mats on the floor, like was talked about earlier. We want to get these people housed and into our program, into our drop-in centers, into our churches, into our congregations, and the people in Kenmore. And what I love about Kenmore, and I'm new to this, the volunteer spots are filling up like hot cake, like wildfire. You know, there's, what, 100 spots, volunteer spots, and they're halfway filled, we're a month out. You know, the, the citizens in Kenmore, the people, the faith community, and the people who want to attack this problem are stepping up. And they're amazing to work with, you know. So, I get the fears, and I think they're reasonable on a level. But I, I, I just wanted to make that be known, that we're meeting these people now, you know, in our drop-in center and being entered into this coordinated entry system, so.
So, I, I guess, if you know these people, and you've worked with the people, why haven't you cleared the warrants? If you're providing the help and that, you say, why aren't you clearing the warrants? Why are they afraid of the warrant checks?
Yeah, that's a, that's a great question. We can talk for hours about the trauma, about being homeless, or being a criminal, and like having to face your wreckage and, and, you know, make, amend your issues. There's a lot there to talk about. But that's part of this process for people. You know, to face their probation officers, to face their community service, to face their warrants. And I can't speak specifics on what these warrants are going to be, but a lot of times they're probably misdemeanor, or minor drug offense stuff. And we get people into drug court. We, we help them navigate. All these resources are out there. And these people need pointing in the direction of the rehabilitation, you know. And, and that's what we will help do. We have case managers in our little organization that's touching so many lives. We have our own case managers to help people get into housing. But I, I think it's a great conversation to have. And me personally, I do think it's important for the welfare of the person to not fall back into homelessness, to face their past, or face their mistakes, even if that's a warrant, even if that's some jail time. I've personally helped, you know, I come from volunteer work. Yeah, I've done volunteer work in Seattle for 16 years. You know, I've helped a ton of people walk through that. What, and, and I've seen people sober up and have to go to jail. And there's a lot of dignity in that, to say, yeah, I want to turn my life around, and part of that might be going to jail for six months. And, you know, they got 12-set meetings in jail, you know. And, and there's, there's some dignity in that, you know, for people trying to get back on the road. So, I'm not saying that all the people that we work with have warrants, have criminal issues, have drug issues, because I don't think that's the case. I think that's a stigma, that we just assume that everybody who's living on the street is, you know, a drug addict, or an alcoholic, or a criminal. I think that's a larger stigma. I don't believe that everybody in this room sees that we're public servants, we're community...
Oh, I don't think that for a minute.
Yeah, you and me both, yeah.
But in the same sense, if they don't, if the, part of the, the reason they come here is because they don't want a warrant check, and you are working with your case managers, and you're trying to find them employment, they got warrants, they're not going to find a job.
And, okay, so I'm, I'm new to this particular program. I am not new to, I, I could give my testimony here if you wanted it, but I'm not new to the process. But there's, in the data that I've read, the, the past years of the shelter's history, it's a fledgling program that's done a ton of great work. There's no precedent for that, for people ducking the law for somewhere, or, or going to Kenmore because they don't check. There's no precedent for that. There's not even an instance of that, in the data that I've read, and the people that I've met, so.
All right. Councilmember Shrubnik.
Sorry. You do great work in terms of hooking people up to services, and clearly, you know, committed to the population, making things better. And that's great. I'm, I'm curious, though, the operation hours, or at least what we have written here, is between, well, I know there's an error, it's flipped, but 7:00 PM and 7:00 AM. So, you know, realistically, that work is not happening during the cold weather shelter, it's happening during the day. So, I, I guess, you know, I, I would, I wonder whether there's an opportunity, I'll express the concern and the opportunity. Though, the concern is, people leaving at 7:00 AM, right in the throes of A, rush hour, B, bus stops, I mean, exactly what I was expressing earlier. And the opportunity is, if you don't do that, and actually hold on to people a little bit, I mean, not hold, that's the wrong word, but offer them the opportunity to get services locally, without having to get up and out. Might that be a better model, and is that feasible?
Yeah, I mean, we can get into conversation about shelter model and our long-term goals for a broader shelter model. But for us, as even just having this small program, we have our drop-in center, we have other congregations, we have, like, our case managers, like I said, we are directing people where to go. There's places for people to go. And there's people in our organization, and many others, that are willing to plug them in during the day. So, there's, so, back to the picture I was painting, people walk in, they get assessed immediately, right? They, we sit down, and we, we, we figure out where people are, what, if we know them, we kind of know where they're at, how was your day? So, did you go to the social services office? Did you go to DSHS? Did you, you know, and there's some follow-up that happens there with, with these folks. So, there, there are places to go, and there's direction for people in the morning. And we have a paid, it's a stipend, but we have a driver that takes people. It's not a, we don't open the doors, and everybody goes, or, you know, randomly into the neighborhood. We take people to the park-and-ride, yeah.
I just want to echo, so the drop-in center, we have relationship with very closely because it's connected to Seattle Menonite. And, and, and our case manager is, is employed during the day. And so he continues to follow up with people, so he gets a sense of what their needs are, and then, and helps them in their housing search, or whatever they need during the day. And so he'll meet them at the drop-in, or he'll even pick them up at the shelter, and then they go. So, really, meeting one person's need at a time, that, you know, it's real person-centered that way, and to follow up.
Deputy Mayor.
Maybe you just answered my questions. I was just going to reiterate for, Councilmember Shrubnik wasn't around last year, and we had a lot of these discussions the first time with the shelter last October. This shelter does take kind of a step above and beyond what they do for other cities, where they are transporting people from the bus stops to the church and back, again, in the mornings. And that's part of why we kick in a few bucks from the requests last week. And then, yeah, the drop-in center down in Lake City is just a quick bus ride away, and, and offers a lot of those daytime supports for folks. It may not be on, might, may not be right there, but it's just right down on the 522 or the 372, just down the street. So, it's relatively accessible.
Councilmember Curtis?
So it sounds like even though there's not an, an official, nor can it be required, a, you know, warrant check, or sexual offender check, it sounds like in essence, you know these people well enough, you probably know the answer, just from your working with them.
I mean, that's the goal. That's our goal.
So, I guess, I, I'm a little confused here. I don't understand, if you're actively seeking housing for them, how can they obtain housing with active warrants? I mean, they do checks, right? And a lot of the, the housing, at least the housing managers I know of for apartments and whatever, they do background checks.
Yeah, I guess what I would say to that is, it's not as frequent as we might think. People having warrants in our community, it's not, it's not an everyday occurrence for us.
Any other questions? Councilmember Danuski.
So I guess I don't really have a question, it's just a comment, that as we're thinking through this, this is an ordinance that does not apply to just this organization that's presenting today. It would apply to anybody. So although they really know their people, it doesn't mean that the next group that came in next year, or the year after that, would have any clue who their residents are. So it's just something to keep in mind as we're thinking through this.
All right. Any other questions, comments? All right, so, I will, Councilmember Curtis?
That does bring up a question for me. So, it sounds like the way we're going to solve the problem if we have more than one applicant, is through lottery. And there may be one organization who's been doing this for several years, and has all the support staff, and somebody else who just says, oh, that's kind of cool, we'll just kind of open the door without anybody on site to view, you know, counselors, or evaluating people, or anything. And we're going to determine by lottery. That seems a less-than-ideal way to sort things out, rather than comparing two programs for their merits.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just, just make a comment, since under the, the language before you, that would be limited to, to one low-barrier winter shelter a year, you could consider that the, let's say, if it was still a lottery basis, that it would still be subject to council approval each year.
Well, I think that's kind of why we're doing this ordinance, so, to describe the different ones. And so, to have that in the ordinance, it's, you know, we have to approve it.
I think that would give the council the, the final word.
Councilmember Curtis?
Yeah, I guess I'm concerned enough about the lottery solution to the problem. I guess I would rather have some kind of wording that, like, if some organization has been consistently doing this in the past, because they have to report to the, we, at least, no, no, that's the longer, longer one. It just seems like somehow, if we have information on the group, that we should be able to use that information going forward. So I don't know if there's another way to solve that than the lottery. So the lottery just seems too random. And it could, you could have two groups with totally, totally different models, and different levels of service. And you could give it to somebody who's never done it before, and pretty incompetent at this task. So I guess I'd like to see that part somehow removed, and say, there's a priority that goes to those who've done it in the past, or with adequate background services, or some, something to, to give preference to those who have some skills and training and expertise in this area.
If I make a comment, I completed a long application form through the ShareOne app, which included the Kenmore. And so that would have given details about the shelter already in that application, so. And that was a request for funding. So if you tie those two together, I don't know.
Councilmember Danuski.
So I guess if we went to prioritizing who'd been here the year before, we'd have to be a little careful on that, because what if we had a bad experience with them that year, and we didn't want them to come back, and now they've got the priority to come back? So, I think it's hard either way you go on that one.
All right. Any further comments or questions? Councilmember Curtis and Councilmember Shrubnik.
So I know on the one hand, we're trying to create a policy that's clear enough that it can be administered without council hands-on every year. On the other hand, I, if, if everything else was taken care of, except this one issue, we got more than one group that wants to do it, I wouldn't mind having that come to the council. Because I don't think it's going to happen that often, that it's going to be a huge burden on us. So, that's how I'd prefer to solve it. Just say, if there's more than one, bring it to the council, and we'll sort it out.
For the low barrier.
All right. Any other? Oh, yes, Councilmember Shrubnik.
Well, I, I don't know whether we make a motion or not, but I...
I don't think we're there yet. We're still in the public hearing.
Public hearing.
Okay.
We haven't opened it yet.
Okay. Then I do have a question. So, is it, I have a two, two-part feasibility question. I mean, if one of our concerns is the seven-to-seven issue, I mean, is there, is there, I, I thought I asked this earlier, but I didn't get quite the answer I was hoping for. Is there any flexibility on that in the morning hours? So that's question one.
I guess I'm trying to figure out where the flexi, what you're looking to be flexible on.
To allow people to...
Be longer, or?
Yes, in the morning. Right. Yeah.
So that's a, a funding question. Because, yeah, we really, and, and a space issue. So we would have to get permission from the congregation to stay longer. And then, and there's activities that sometimes happen during the day. And then, we would have fun, need to have funding to continue to pay people to supervise during the day.
I'm thinking something like, you know, 9:00 in the morning, or 9:30, or, you know, I mean, just, you know, so it's not right in the thick of thing.
Very humane.
Yeah, so, so that's one.
Yeah, and your sentiment is understood. Like, and that's our goal, and we want year-long shelter. I mean, we're working to have that, so.
But the 24/7 piece.
Well, certainly 24/7 would be ideal, but I'm, I'm, again, trying to get to some middle ground. So the issue is funding. That's, that's what I'm hearing, is you would like to be able, funding and, and amenability of the space, obviously, the, the host. Okay, so that's one. And then the other, well, maybe this isn't a question for you, it's more something that we would consider, I guess, is regulating the location. I do want to come back to that issue.
Bless, that's not a question.
All right. Any other questions, comments? So, the public hearing, ordinance number 18 dash 0466, temporary homeless shelter. I declare the public hearing open. Clerk Pete to call the first person.
Jeff, Jeffrey Dugger.
Good evening, thanks for the opportunity. I'm a Kenmore resident, registered voter, paying attention. Been here since 1999. I love this community. I've lived in several places across the United States. This is my favorite, and this is where I want to stay until I pass on, whenever that may be. I love Kenmore, always will. I worked last year as a volunteer, as kitchen coordinator in the shelter we had here at Northlake Lutheran. I too was surprised whenever the process started, the discussion about low barrier. I have children, raised down, concerns. I watch the news and read the newspaper. And after hearing the presentation, I still had a few concerns, but they were personal. I, I believe in the professional, you know, expertise of these people. And I was surprised. The people that came in, 80% of them, I'm stabbing at a number here, working poor. When 7:00 o'clock in the morning comes around, they're not just laying on the street down here waiting for a handout. They're on their way to a job. I do a lot of volunteering. I do a lot of volunteering. This last Saturday was a shift that I volunteered at North Helpline. It's through the two eleven portal, providing, I used to work in the distribution center. Now I work in the emergency services department. Nice lady named Jennifer came through that was in our shelter last year, here in October. Wouldn't have known her otherwise. I knew her by name. Hey, Jennifer, how you doing? I was already waiting on a client and couldn't wait on her and she was so happy to see my face, you know? Towards the end of the shift Saturday, there's five minutes left. We had the food bank going on another department. Lady came in all distraught. She didn't have her card. She was denied at the, at the, at the front desk and she had five minutes left to get her card, to get in line, to get some food. And she was all distraught, animated. And she came in and she couldn't get the words out. And I recognized her. Her name was Ann. She's a senior and she was here at our shelter last year. And I called, I looked up because I knew there was some commotion there and I said, Ann! I got choked up with my best friend telling her the story the other day. You folks helped facilitate the hug and the love that I felt with her and the relief on her face that there was someone there with a smile who cared, right? It was me and I love everybody. That's not the big deal. The big deal is, is you guys have already done part of this. We, we, we had the low barrier shelter last year. There were a few characters that came in late at night. Can't help it. I try not to judge people, but you see them and you're like, oh, wow, why do they have to be here? We've got all these working poor here. We've got all these nice people. They're peace-loving and they're quiet. It's been a beautiful, nice evening and these people have to show up. Well, I try to love them too. And when they come in, they have rights. I'm not a lawyer. I don't know all the ins and outs of it, but I expect them to have rights like I would if I rented a room in a motel. They don't go through my bags. They don't ask me personal questions about things they, you know, they just don't. I understand this is a little bit different dynamic, but these people need a place to stay. And they come here and this is my community and I love it. I don't like seeing them down there on the street. If we have a place for them, there won't be as many on the street. Some of them I know by name. I see them at Safeway. The gentleman behind the Safeway, he's famous. Kenmore neighbors, everybody knows about him. I'll bet you we'll get him up there in the shelter this year. Bet you we will. Okay? I don't have all the answers. I understand there's a lot of fear involved, but we, I get fearful sometimes I get out of my van and I go into Safeway, right? Because of certain elements that I see. But I'm not going to let my life be destroyed or, or, or be encumbered so much because of something that may be scary to me. That's something we have to face every day, all around us. I want to be able to sleep at night and know where Ann is. And I don't know where she's at tonight. I can't hug her. I can't, I don't have the resources to go help her. I remember a minister many years ago said, as many people come to us needing help with real problems, he says, I feel like I'm standing on the end of a pier with loved ones all around me drowning. I don't know how to swim. And sometimes I feel that way. But I'm engaged as far as volunteering. I'm engaged with caring about my community and what everyone's here is trying to do is do that very same thing, right? Most of what we see there are not criminals. They're regular people that have jobs and they have feelings and emotions. And some of them are here in Kenmore every day that we see. I hope my words have meant something to you and have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Duggar.
Wim Malden.
Mayor, Council. My name is Wim Malden. I live down Juanita Boulevard, Juanita Drive. I'm a volunteer at Mary's Place and there I help the guests find homes and jobs. Mary's Place provides about six hundred and eighty family members with support every day. And this last week, we celebrated five families getting into a new home. That's only five families. There was a lot of statistics given to us by Ms. Zilstra and I don't need to repeat all of them. This problem is not going to go away anytime soon. And so there are other considerations here before us too that need to be illuminated. I was a pastor for forty-five years and I'm well aware that the, the challenges that face North Lake Lutheran as well as other congregations across King County, as they are called specifically by Jesus to help those who are homeless and poor. Specifically in the Gospel of Matthew, where it says that as we treat them, we treat Jesus. We have an explicit and sacred responsibility to provide opportunities for all people experiencing poverty and homelessness in our community. And since that is a part of our religious expression, there is no need for a permit unless, as I think that probably the mayor's language was indicating, there is some clear and present danger to the health and safety of the community. That was established by the Washington State Supreme Court, Jan Samamish versus North Shore United Church of Christ. And so we are not intending that we should be confrontational about this or adversarial. And I certainly don't speak for North Lake Lutheran Church. But I think that it is important for us to determine specifically whether that risk is, is real and apparent. There is, because the church community is not experts in this, we rely on professionals to tell us what the best protection of the homeless might be. And it turns out to be also the best protection of the community at large. They direct us to providing low barrier emergency shelters. We just ask that you be listening carefully to what it is that they have to say, but they're not the only ones who advocate this. Others that advocate the same low barrier of emergency shelters range all the way from the United Way of King County to the Trump administration's Interagency Council on Homelessness that tells us, as in the words of the council, create low barrier access to emergency shelters. And so I just ask for you, so that we don't belabor this point any more than we need to, that you establish that if you're going to restrict a permit from a religious organization, particularly congregations or other faith communities, that you be absolutely sure that there is a clear and present danger to the health and safety of the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Malden.
Anya Hillman.
Hello, City Council. I almost wore my clergy shirt tonight and then I realized you all know who I am. So I am Anya, resident in Kenmore and pastor of North Lake Lutheran Church and member of KBIG Kenmore Bothell Interfaith Group. As you know, we at North Lake offered to partner with KBIG and the city of Kenmore because we do see this as a partnership with all of you on hosting the low barrier winter shelter because we believe that when we provide a safe place for these people to sleep, not only does it keep them safer, people who have no other place to go, but getting them off the streets and into a place that is appropriately staffed keeps our own neighborhoods safer as well. And I want to be clear, this may be a low barrier shelter, but we do have rules, as we were talking about before. And I, as the pastor of the church where these people are sleeping, have been very adamant. Melanie and I have had quite a few conversations about wanting to be pretty, very hard, and we've been talking about it too, to be very hard and firm, that there are not supposed to be, there are, well, no drugs, no alcohol, no weapons, anything, any glimpse of anything like that that's happening on the grounds. And I am insisting that they are removed. And as I mentioned before, removed doesn't mean just kicked out the door so now they're hanging around. So last year, when I was first told, and I've shared this with some of you who were on council last year, when I was first told that there was a desire to have the shelter be low barrier, I was very concerned and I expressed my own objections and was not in favor of doing it. But I realized as I was thinking about it, that I was letting my own emotions get in the way, my emotions and my fears, and that I didn't really know what was the best thing for everyone involved. Now, I don't know if you all know this part or not, but before I was a pastor, I've only been a pastor for three and a half years. Before I was a pastor, I worked at Microsoft and I did data management there. And so I've learned to rely on the data, to rely on the statistics. And so when I did some research, not only talking with people, but also researching what the data says, what different, and why would King County or the city of Seattle insist that we bring everyone in, and found that the statistics say this is the safest approach. And I've learned to rely on those statistics over my own emotions and fears. Statistics encourage not doing background checks because inviting them in is not only the more humane approach, but it actually makes us safer. Remember, whatever group of people we decide not to allow in, those are the people that are most likely to then be sleeping on the streets or in the parks. So where would you prefer them to be? On the streets or in a shelter that is staffed by trained personnel? So for all of these reasons, we hope to continue partnering with KBIG and with the city of Kenmore in future years, just as we hope to see the city of Kenmore continue to grow and become more and more diverse and compassionate city, which I think we are known for right now, which I appreciate, a place to work, a wonderful place to work, a wonderful place to live. And I think having, taking our responsibility in providing these kinds of shelters is part of that. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Kristin Joyner.
Good evening, Council. I'm Reverend Kristin Joyner from Bothell United Methodist Church, and I'm one of the facilitators for the Kenmore Bothell Interfaith Group. And I can't believe I have five minutes and I don't plan on taking the whole thing. But I, I do want to say that as a partner with the Kenmore Bothell Interfaith Group, our congregation is in support of the temporary shelter. Last year, I personally helped to serve meals. I did the shuttle driving. I invited people into my car from the park and ride and drove them to the shuttle, back and back again. I did that numerous times and got to know the guests at the shelter. I knew some of the guests because they eat at the Bothell Community Kitchen, which I go to as a pastor every Sunday night at five o'clock. You're all welcome to come and meet some of the guests that we have there that also share in this resource. And that, that this is a resource for the community. And one of the reasons it's a great partnership is because to offer this resource by ourselves isn't possible. It's great to have Lake City partners. I know one of your concerns is bringing in people from other parts of the city, but that's how we do it in partnership. Because then the people that come here get the resource of God's little acre and the day management, case management that they offer, the showers and the hygiene facilities and the washer and dryer that we don't have in Kenmore and Bothell. So that partnership, even though we bring people in, really helps to support the rest of us. It allows us training as well. So I'm really just here to say thank you that the communities, the faith communities in the Kenmore Bothell Interfaith Group know that you've supported them with the grant that you voted on last week for two thousand and we want to thank you for that. And we want to thank you for your continued discussion on this really difficult topic and your consideration for helping in this regional way, in this regional crisis. Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend.
Juliet Yaman.
Good evening. I'm Juliet Yamaney. I have lived in Kenmore on Sixty-S sixth Avenue Northeast, which borders the church. And I have been following this issue closely because I have two children who walk regularly past the church. I also am following this issue closely because it's an important one and we need to care for those who are homeless. Last spring, I attended a hearing to discuss Camp Unity, et cetera. And I, I attended the meeting that Camp Unity was present at, at the church. And as a neighbor who is concerned about all interests, my children as well as the homeless, I really appreciated the rules that Camp Unity required of guests, that the guests themselves implemented, rules such as no outstanding warrants, no drug and alcohol tolerated, patrolling of grounds regularly, an attendant there twenty-four hours. These are the rules and regulations Camp Unity implements. I am concerned. If those are the rules that Camp Unity has for their guests, why would we not require those same requirements for all shelters? We talk about supervision and I'm sure that staff are very well-trained. I appreciate that. They are not responsible after seven AM. That's when I get concerned. I'm not concerned when the residents are under supervision from seven PM to seven AM, not at all. I'm concerned about the hours around that. And again, as Councilmember Shrubnik did mention, this is a very residential location and that should be taken under consideration. The transport that is, was discussed and is offered to guests who want to leave for whatever reason, that's offered. It is not required that they take that. It is offered. I appreciate that it's offered, but we cannot force anybody to take that transportation. The issue of what is low barrier is variable. The definition we heard from the presentation earlier, what is low barrier? That is variable, is what we were told. So with that in mind, I really would strongly urge you, advocate that you would specify what low barrier really means. Specify the requirements. Don't just, low barrier is an abstract term that I believe to balance the interests of all involved, really needs to be very specifically explained and put into the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Mollie.
Mayor, there's nobody else signed up?
Anybody else wishing to be heard? Anybody else wishing to be heard? Then I declare the public hearing on ordinance number eighteen dash zero four six six to be closed. Next item on the agenda is ordinance number dash zero four six six relating to zoning and land use controls and temporary homeless shelters and cold weather low barrier shelters to the Kenmore Municipal Code to enact regulations for indoor and outdoor temporary homeless shelters and cold weather low barrier shelters. I've got a question, our Assistant City Manager. Oh, and I guess our attorney. What in essence we're doing is modifying two sections of code, eighteen dash, eighteen dot two hundred dot, eighteen dot one hundred dot two hundred and eighteen dot two hundred dot two ten. We're adding those.
You're adding them, yes.
And they're not mentioned here anywhere in this ordinance. It's just this ordinance number is eighteen dash zero four six six. Soon we'll be talking about the code that we're adding in the motion?
Well, the motion would be, I would guess, would be to approve ordinance eighteen oh four six six, sec, the primary section of which says that Exhibit A is adopted, which adds those two sections the mayor mentioned.
Okay, yeah, the last one we're adding.
Right. Because Exhibit A, if you look in your packet.
So that's, that's enough that we adopt that and not reference the new code sections?
Well, the.
We've always referenced.
The new code sections are an attachment to the ordinance.
Pardon?
The new code sections, maybe I'm looking at a different.
No, no, I think you're reading it right. It's just that ordinance looks like a resolution and that's what's got me.
Is that right?
It's titled an ordinance, but it looks like a resolution with all the wherashes. It's titled an ordinance, but it looks like a resolution with all the whereas's, now therefor's.
Well, our ordinance does normally have whereas's. I guess I missed it.
That's fine.
I don't know if I understood the question.
I was looking at, I was looking at the code sections in, in, in our materials. But, okay, that's fine. If that's deformed, then that's all right.
I want to make sure the mayor has, is looking at the right documents that we are.
I'm looking, looking at the right document.
Oh, I see. You can't see it on your laptop?
Yes, I can.
Oh, okay.
Mayor, I think possibly, if you wouldn't mind me just saying that, I think the fact that the whole title of the ordinance is not on the agenda is possibly what you're saying. Because the whole title does talk about adding the new sections and what the numbers are.
Fine.
Okay, and I'm looking at a printout of the agenda bill. I'm not looking at the agenda itself, sorry.
That's fine. Yeah, the agenda item doesn't mention, okay, that's fine, never mind. Okay. So, then, the Chair will entertain a motion to approve 18 dash 0466 relating to zoning and land use controls and temporary homeless shelters and cold weather low barrier shelters to the Kenmore Municipal Code to enact regulations for indoor and outdoor temporary homeless shelters and cold weather low barrier shelters.
Point of order?
Yes.
Is it past the time for discussion?
We have discussion and questions after...
After the motion.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah, it has to be a second.
I'll make that motion, but I do have something I'd like to change.
That's fine. Is there a second?
A second.
Moved in second. Okay, now, questions, discussion. Councilmember Curtis.
So my concern is, is still the, what do you do when there's more than one group that wants to do it?
Okay.
And my solution would be, I don't think it'll happen very often, and I'm willing to, as the council, let us take that responsibility and make that decision. So I understand we want to make this as simple to administer as possible. We want to let the staff and the city manager take care of things, but that is the one issue I'd be happy to reserve for ourselves.
Okay. So you want to make a motion to that effect, an amendment?
So, so I would propose an amendment that we just delete that. So I think it would have to be from both ordinances, because like you say, they are the same in both types of issues we're dealing with. So just delete that and say that it'll come to the council if there's more than one group willing to or interested in serving those, in those areas.
So if there's more than one, take it away from the city manager and give it back to the council?
Yes.
Okay.
I would ask the city attorney that if that's the decision that you make, could language for that be prepared tonight?
There is a motion to pass the ordinance on the dais, on the table.
There is, and this is an amendment to that motion.
My point of order or comment would be that that motion is not a specific amendment to the ordinance, which is before the council. And it would be impossible for the council to consider the motion in relation to the ordinance.
Even though the ordinance states city manager makes the decision...
It doesn't say that, though.
But I thought it did.
The, the new section actually doesn't say it that way.
The which?
The, the section, the new section that Councilmember Curtis is referring to is 18 100 to 10.
Right.
And what I think he's referring to is subsection D1 near the end of that section.
Okay.
Which says there shall only be one cold weather shelter, and then has a process for considering the, the applications, meaning there's going to be notice of intent, and then there's a lottery if there are more notices of intent than one. So I guess I would ask Councilmember Curtis if what he's saying is to delete D, D1, D2, or what is being deleted?
It might be the subset C there. If more than one letter of intent is filed during the month of October, the city must hold a lottery. So instead of saying the city must hold a lottery, just say the issue will be brought to the council for a decision.
Yeah. What, I don't think the motion has a second there, does it? The motion to amend?
It hasn't been asked yet.
Oh, okay. So my comment would be, if the council wishes to change the process that is in 210, so that if there is more than one notice of intent to file an application, that there is a process by which the applications come to the city council for perhaps preliminary review, or somehow there's a process where if there's more than one, then one could be approved by the city manager and an additional one or more has to come to the city council. That is very specific and detailed language that we would have to work out. So maybe the motion could be that the staff be requested to develop language to modify this Section 210 to implement that concept.
It's in 200 as well.
State the intent, but let the staff work out detailed language.
It's under D there. Also, I'll...
Low barrier and not low barrier.
Because it's very, it's a concept that I can't, I won't be able tonight to give you the language. It's a very complicated process that you're asking for, and we'd have to think about how to best to implement it.
So, as I stated the amendment, there wasn't a second, was there?
Clerk? No second, okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. It hadn't been asked for yet.
It hadn't been asked.
It hadn't been asked yet.
So this is all, this is a discussion?
Do you want me to restate, then, my proposed amendment?
Well, the difficulty we're having is that there is a motion on the, on the floor.
Yes.
To adopt the ordinance. So the, those who would want that change would have to vote against the motion to adopt the ordinance as ordered.
And we already have a motion and a second for the, the whole motion.
Right.
Yeah.
So we would need a specific amend, a motion to amend the ordinance in a particular way to have that amendment actually before the council tonight.
And?
And what I'm commenting on, because there's no motion, is that a, an amendment to amend the ordinance before the council tonight to follow Councilmember Curtis's direction is impossible to write on the floor.
Okay. So then if we...
It's not impossible to write, it's just impossible to write.
It would be difficult to write.
Could it be handled? If we disposed of the main motion, could that be handled?
Yes.
Okay.
Those who want that, who want that concept would have to vote down the main motion.
Would they, or would, could this be postponed to date and time certain, which is 10 minutes from now?
Could it be?
I think what I hear you saying is it's going to take more than 10 minutes to figure that out.
A motion to table, date and time certain, 10 minutes from now.
Okay. That's, that's an appropriate motion.
Okay. I can't make a motion. Somebody want to make a motion to postpone for date and time certain?
I don't understand what that means.
If I may ask the, the attorney, is 10 minutes enough to do what you're, what I'm requesting? Or is that still, it requires more thought than that?
I would say no.
Okay.
Okay.
So if I just, is there a way to approve the whole motion, leaving that little piece out and say that will just be discussed as a separate issue?
Well, my understanding is that what we're really talking about practically is the cold weather shelter during the months of October through April.
No.
No.
Not at all.
That's not correct.
As an immediate concern.
No.
No.
It relates to...
Because one way to handle this is to just pass the motion, the ordinance, and then come back later with amendments. That could always be done.
So this, this ordinance we're passing tonight goes into effect 2019 for the shelter. It does not affect this year's shelter.
Would it be possible if we just had a discussion amongst the council to see if there's any will to do what I'm proposing?
Yes, of course.
If I'm the only person who's suggesting it, then it's irrelevant.
Of course. Because it is dealing with what we are trying to pass. So, fine. Councilmember Marshall.
And I think what Councilmember Curtis says makes perfect sense, that in the case that there are multiple applications for a cold weather shelter, the decision which to approve shall be brought before the council. I would think that would be simple enough language that could be put in there to the elimination of the lottery tonight. But that's IMHO.
Councilmember Danuski.
I would support this for both sections, not just one section.
Councilmember Shremnik.
And I would also support it, and I just want to make a clarification. Are, Rod, are you saying that we can't amend, we can't make motions to amend what is written? That's fairly restrictive.
You can't. I would strongly recommend that that motion provide the language or the specifics for the amendment, or the specific sections that are being added or delete, or that are being deleted.
Okay.
I think you stated it quite well, just the last time you did. You, Dr. Curtis?
I did?
Yes.
You sounded way clearer.
No, you're, it's way clearer that you want, if there is multiple applications, that the council should decide to accept, which, which one to accept. That's, I mean, that's it, in essence.
That's it, right.
That's it.
So if there's multiple applications, council will decide which application to accept.
So like under 18 100 to 200, D, C, you could change to say if more than one letter of intent is filed during the month of October, the city, the applications will be forwarded to the city council for final approval. And then delete D and E. And then under 210, under D, if more than one letter of intent is filed during the month of June, the applications will be forwarded to the city council for decision, or something like that. But I think that gets to exactly what...
It gets us partially, in my opinion, gets us partially there, because then the question will be asked immediately during that process, well, what are the standards by which the city council is going to choose between one or another? So we need to put some language...
I mean, we, we don't necessarily have to tie future councils' hands on this. We'll have different councils. As long as one of them gets approved, you know, that meets what Dr. Curtis was talking about generally.
Yeah, well, we could just put it, put it in there. You know, my recommendation would be that there be some standard that the council is going to use to pick between the two, and some process by which the council has to get information about the different applicants.
Application.
But we could put that in there, and we could modify it later, because it's my understanding there won't be any applications for this coming season.
Right.
Because right now, the law is there can only be one. Although, would this work if, if this is done? Yeah, because you'd have to apply before the month of October.
That's right.
So I'm okay if that's the best way to handle it legally, just to say, we'll approve it, but we can come back and amend it, you know, in the next week or two. I mean, this...
Yeah.
Assistant City Manager can...
If there's no standards in there, we will have to develop some at some point.
Yeah, because I think there's, the will of the council is to make this change. And what's this most straightforward way from your standpoint? It doesn't matter to me. I know it'll get done.
Mayor, I have a comment, if I can. Are you guys asking to screen the application? Are you actually asking to review and approve the final decision?
Review and...
To screen?
Only if there's more than two.
Only if there's two, you're going to screen it.
Two or more. Yeah, if there's one, it's done.
Yep, two or more, screen it, goes back to city staff to finish up the application and approve it according to the rest of the ordinance.
Right.
That's not what I heard, though.
That's not what I heard either. That's why I was clarifying.
Right.
So if there's one, it's managed administratively. It's out of our hands. It's only when there's two or more that we, instead of using the lottery to sort it out, we sort it out.
You sort it out and...
We're going to screen. We're going to do...
And it goes back to the staff.
Yeah, we're going to do all the screening and everything ourselves, right? Or we're going to have staff do the screening and let us determine?
Well, the staff will have gained, gathered the, all the information from the application, and that will need to be shared with us and said, well, there's three people that applied for a low barrier shelter this year. And then we'll say, we'll give us all the information you have, and then we will make a decision.
On which one we'll get to be processed.
Because the ordinance says there's only one.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I could mention, would, would you want the staff to bring a recommendation?
Yeah.
I'd be happy to have a recommendation.
You'd need a rationale.
So you're not left with, okay, we have three applicants to...
Or two.
Or two, two go through.
Okay, so then if they bring us the recommendation, our job is either to approve that, that recommendation or deny it.
So we're still back to the methodology that we use to get to where we want to get to. So, city attorney, then is your recommendation that we approve this ordinance, and then we come back and do some amending after the staff has had, and you some time to think about it and try to capture our intent?
That would be my preference. However, maybe we could try to work some language out in 10 minutes if you wanted to take a...
I thought you said that was...
Well, if, if, now that we're talking about it some more, if all we're going to say is it comes to you and you get to make the decision, we can probably work that language out with the caveat that I've mentioned, which is, it's not going to be an adequate process, though. Because that means the council is just going to make a decision, and no one will know ahead of time what that decision is going to be based on. So it's, it's a difficult process to implement, and I would not recommend it doing it that simply. But as long as we have that concept in there, and we know that there is not going to be a cold weather temporary shelter application in the next few weeks, that can, that law can stay on the books, and we can think about how to amend it appropriately later.
The council member also indicated that he wanted the staff recommendation.
Could we add that?
Could I bring up one more question? What if there's a situation where there is one application, and either it's from a familiar organization or from a brand-new organization? Would the council still want to make a final approval?
No, just follow it administrative. We've got, that's what all this hard work is all about.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify.
So, Mr. City Attorney, are you suggesting you can write that in the next 10 minutes and we can do an amendment, or no?
Well, I'll try, and if we can, if you want to go on to other business, I could certainly try.
Fine. So, further discussion, there's a motion in front of us to approve...
Do you want to do that, hold until...
I've got another amendment if we could...
No, we've still got more stuff going.
More amendments.
So, any further comments, questions? Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, I want to address the 30 versus 31 days thing, so...
Oh, yes.
I would propose an amendment to change 18 100 to 10, Section A, to read, "The section regulates cold weather low barrier shelters. Cold weather low barrier shelters are indoor emergency shelters for the homeless that operate for 31 consecutive days or less between October and April. Restrict operation 9:10 hours and do not screen potential residents for sex under satisfactory warrants." Just to make it easier for them to operate on a calendar basis.
And if I could add, you're probably also wanting to look at 3, I just had it, 3E. Same, same thing. Limit duration of operation to 30.
On 210 or on 200?
210.
Yes.
Okay, so there is a motion in front of us.
So let's include 210 to add, to change the wording to 31 consecutive days as part of that motion.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, moved in second to change 30 to 31 in both places. Amendment. All right. Can we do this? Let's just do a roll call for simplicity's sake. Motion in front of us is change 30 to 31.
Are you looking for a roll call, Matt?
I am.
Sorry, missed that. All right, Councilmember Danuski?
Yes.
Councilmember Curtis?
Yes.
Councilmember Marshall?
Yes.
Councilmember Shremnik?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Herbig?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Unanimous.
All right. Fine, so it stands amended. And 30 will be changed... Um, fine, so it stands amended, and thirty will be changed thirty-one in those two places. All right, next. Councilmember Danuski.
So I'm still struggling on the cold barrier with the lack of sex offender check and at least felony warrant checks, because this is an ordinance for whatever group comes in, not one that, you know, not one that's sitting in front of us talking to, and we don't, we don't know what other groups are going to be like. The elementary school bus stop is right at sixty-eighth and one eighty-fifth. The junior high bus stop is right at sixty-eighth and one ninety-fifth, or one eighty-fifth, and the high school bus stop is also there as well. So that whole neighborhood walks literally right next to this church for all, all of the schools. And so, as much as I do support low barrier, all locations are not created equal in my mind, so that's a concern I'm having right now.
I, I guess, I, I share the same concern here about keeping the community safe because they're on our streets, but in actuality, you're busing them in, and so they weren't there to begin with. And so my concern continues to be warrant checks, at least for felonies, and, and weapon checks and that. Councilmember Shrubnik.
I actually had, to use, turn a phrase, a bit of an epiphany when one of our audience members came up to provide some information, and he used the phrase, or something to the order of, when you go to a hotel, they don't check you, and that's absolutely true. And so that makes me wonder whether it might be best suited to zones in which we allow hotels, and those are not residential neighborhoods. So I would be curious what can, if somebody can, probably Brian, can articulate what those zones are.
So temporary homeless shelters aren't a current permitted use in our zoning code?
What, regular hotels? We have hotels.
Right. Was your question, what hotels we could...
What are the zones in which hotels are allowed?
Oh, which zones hotels are allowed? I thought you were asking which zones, about the temporary use of hotels. I don't know exactly off the top of my head which zones hotels are allowed in.
Deputy Mayor.
So I appreciated, actually, the same comment that Councilmember Shrubnik was referring to, you know, we don't require background checks for people in Airbnbs, and those are sprinkled all over our city. But here we are kind of debating whether or not we should require that for the neediest among us who are just trying to get a shelter over their head and heat while they sleep in December or November. You know, I understand that people aren't comfortable, I, I get that, and so I went digging around a little bit, and I found a, something actually from the Washington State Department of Commerce from two thousand sixteen, talking about homelessness and some myths surrounding it. I'm just going to read a couple of those really quickly, but myth, people who are homeless are violent, dangerous, and are lawbreakers. Fact, a person who's homeless is no more likely to be a criminal than a housed person, with one exception, which is camping ordinances. A person who's homeless, people who are homeless break the law merely by being homeless. A person who's homeless is less likely to perpetrate a violent crime than a housed person, and is in fact more likely to be victim of a violent crime, especially if they are a homeless woman. Myth, it isn't safe for sex offenders to be in shelter. Reporting requirements for registered offenders with no fixed address are particularly stringent compared to most housed offenders. They're obligated to live under the terms of release determined by a court, must report to the local sheriff every week about where they're staying, and are under threat of more stringent reclassification or reconfinement if they break these terms. If an offender is living at the shelter, that will be the registered address. Access to a shelter is a positive factor associated with offenders meeting the requirements of their release, while banning them from shelter forces them into more stressful life on the streets associated with a greatly likelihood of recidivism. Largest study to date commissioned by the U.S. Department of Justice, hundreds of recidivism rate of five point, five point three percent lower for the many other categories of crime. Understand that seeing homeless folks out in our community makes us uncomfortable, and frankly, it should. We're one of the richest countries in the nation, and we're living in one of the most prosperous parts of that country, and yet, you know, we have thousands of people sleeping outside in the elements. That should make all of us uncomfortable. I frankly don't think it's acceptable. The shelter here that we're talking about is going above and beyond what they are doing in Seattle or Shoreline. They're shuttling folks to and from the bus stops so that we won't see them walking through our neighborhoods. They operated successfully last year, and while there were concerns, I didn't see any of those concerns borne out. They were a good partner last year, and I expect them to be a similar partner this year and going into the future. This is literally the least that we can do to ensure that for at least one month, we're part of the solution of getting folks outside of the cold during the winter, rather than part of the problem of making it harder for folks to just be warm while they sleep. You know, my, my daughter catches her bus right next to this church. I'm not particularly frightened of somebody wandering by who's heading to the bus stop. I understand that homeless people, they are the other on some level to a lot of folks, because we don't want to encounter them regularly, and we're encountering them more because of kind of the skewed economics of, of what we're dealing with as a region and a country right now, that's producing more and more folks who aren't able to find stable housing. But we, this is such a tiny step, to just let people sleep here overnight and then go down to Lake City. They aren't more violent than the folks that we have living next door, across the street. They're just under harsher circumstances, and we shouldn't punish them for that. So I hope that we are able to pass this tonight.
Councilmember Marshall.
I was concerned, last time when we reviewed the ordinance about a number of loopholes and/or liberal sorts of conditions and lack thereof, but I saw this, I see this ordinance now to be tightened up with the prohibitions in shelters of weapons and drugs and alcohol, and then I had a concern about the, about sex offenders being in the same place as children. I see that that's addressed with sex offenders being prohibited from the temporary shelters, and no children being allowed at the low-barrier shelters. So that addresses my main concerns, I think, on the issue. I'm glad the council is recognizing distinctions, or at least a couple folks have recognized distinctions between misdemeanor and felony warrants, and have thanked the chief for at least sketching that for us to the best of his ability in limited circumstances tonight. But I think my concerns have been addressed, and I don't regard, I think, I feel the same amount of safety that, as Nigel, Councilmember Herbig would have, you know, with his daughter attending that bus stop, I think it's, it should be relatively safe if there are a lot of people around, shelter, staff have, get to know these people, get to try and hook these people up with services. So I, I would ask that the council pass the measure, and we, certainly everybody here must recognize, and I know we do recognize, that the housing crisis that we've got, and that's just absolutely unprecedented levels, even as we have unprecedented wealth here. I think this strikes a good balance.
Councilmember Curtis.
So I didn't, when I made the motion, I didn't speak to it at kind of a high level, and I would like to just step back and do that. So I see homelessness as a community, Puget Soundwide, nationwide issue. If everybody contributes a little bit, then we can help those people who need it. I would prefer a partnership and volunteer approach, rather than the city taking the full responsibility and cost. So the fact that we have a bunch of people willing to do most of the work, to me, that, that seems like a, a good team effort.
So I guess Mary's Place was mentioned tonight, and Mary's Place does drug warrant, background, and weapons checks, so I don't see that as, as necessarily being applicable to the low-barrier shelter. And how can you, how can an address of a shelter for twelve hours be reported to the police by a sex offender that this is their address, when it's for twelve hours or less, and there's no guarantee they'll be back the next night? So I'm a little confused by that one, too. But I, I'm, I'm back on, on the primary mission that we have as elected officials, provide for the safety of our community, and so I would hope that there would at least be modification here to require felony warrant checks, and certainly more than just asking somebody, have you got drugs, or weapons, or alcohol? I, I think that's a, a small price to pay. Councilmember Shrubnik.
Yeah, I, I think this isn't an issue of not wanting to bring people in from the cold, nor is it an issue of not wanting to play our role. I think the issue is how to do that, and how do you bring people in from the cold, and how do you run the operation? There are two things, I don't know, I guess this, I guess we keep making amendments, but I, I, I would venture that the zone is important, and so I guess, problem is, I was under the impression, I mean, we brought this up last week in one-on-ones, and I was the impression we would have that, that zoning information, so I'm not sure how to make the motion without it, but this is more, this is, a low-barrier, twelve-hour shelter is quite different than an encampment, and it's quite different from a shelter where you can stay during the day. It is more like a hotel, so I guess that would be my amendment, if we were, if we have a way to do that, is to say, to regulate, to restrict it to zones where we would allow hotels, which I don't know what those are. But they would be probably more commercial zones.
City Attorney, can we restrict temporary homeless shelters to zoning where hotels are allowed?
Certainly can, but I don't know what zones there was, would be.
If you give me ten minutes, I could find it.
Well...
Do we have seconds?
We've been at this for an hour or so, so I'm sure ten more minutes won't hurt. Uh, Councilmember Curtis.
My concern with that is volunteer organizations are randomly distributed throughout our city, and to say, we're only going to take people who volunteer who are in certain zones, I think the answer will be you'll end up with nobody, and this is a, a problem that needs to be addressed. So, so I, I think the match between zoning and who's the volunteering, I, I just don't see that as a, as a workable restriction.
Councilmember Danuski.
So I like the idea of looking for a location where, you know, maybe support not doing the sex offender warrant checks, but I certainly don't have enough information at all to decide hotel is that zone. It would, it would require a lot more studying before I would approve.
Assistant City Manager.
Mr. Mayor, the city attorney advises me that the language for the first amendment is prepared.
Okay. Are you ready for me to start?
I'm ready for you to say it.
All right. Councilmembers, if you could look with me at, we'll start with the new eighteen one hundred two ten D. We would, the motion would be to amend subsections one, B, C, D, and E. And what I propose to do is to read you how these four sections would be reworded, and then, for the benefit of the audience and everyone else, just read the whole section as it would be stated as amended. So what we would do, and by the way, the same changes would be made to two hundred. In D one, actually, I may have misspoken, it's only C, D, and E. My, my writing is all over the place, but this is only to subsections...
And this is in two ten?
Two ten, D one, and the changes would be to C, D, and E. So C would now read, "If more than one letter of intent is filed during the month of June, the city council must rank all potential applicants during the third or fourth week of July, comma, after determining a ranking procedure and considering a report from the city manager." D would now read, "The potential applicant with the highest ranking must file a complete application and pay all applicable fees on or before August thirty-one." The new D would read, if, the revised D, I'm sorry, the revised D would read, "If the potential applicant with the highest ranking fails to file a complete application and pay all applicable fees by the deadline, or withdraws a complete application, or if the city denies the application, the city shall accept and process applications from other potential applicants in the order of ranking by the city council."
I would accept that. I think that's a little more detailed than I was thinking, but it, it solves the problem, realizing we'd be here in July when we're usually off, but that's okay, this is important. No, I guess it's August that we take.
Mayor, would you like me to read the whole section with the changes, or are those changes good enough?
I'm good, I'm good.
Councilmember Danuski, do we have a question on those changes?
Just a question on those changes is, you mentioned July, but in two hundred, you would change July to October, is that a correct statement? Two hundreds is an October month.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Would be November. Applications come in in October.
Let's make sure that's, that looks, where is two hundred here? Nope. Well, those, actually, I need to think about then the, the months there, let's see.
Now, two hundred is an encampment, right?
Right. I hadn't realized that the dates in two hundred are a little, are different from the dates in the process in, in two ten. Well, I'd ask for another five minutes to write this one out.
Mr. Aquari, was there a reason that you had October for two hundred?
No, I think that's what we originally had, and just thinking of getting everything together and filing the complete application by the end of the year, but I, I don't think there's a...
So is that when, is that when Camp Unity filed, was in October last year for, for their stay in June?
I don't know.
Okay.
No, it wasn't. They filed sometime earlier in the year, March, April.
And we're just trying to establish, I don't think there's a reason other than we're just trying to establish a month for everyone to apply.
Okay, yeah, that makes sense. Any thought on which month to apply for an encampment?
Does the council interested in switching them to be the same?
So there is a reason, sorry, there is a reason on that, and that's that a cold-weather period, as we define it, is from October to April. So you're trying to get the applications in before October, whereas the other types of shelters are a calendar year from January to December, so you'd want to file a few months before the end of the year for the subsequent year.
A bit more lead time.
Yeah.
Councilmember Shrubnik.
You, you could make both in July, though. You, you couldn't move both to October, but you can move both back.
You could move both to July, but perhaps if it's closer to the end of the year, more organizations will know that they will want to, whereas in July, they may not be sure whether they want to the next year or not.
Yes, Mr. Hampson.
I actually have a comment on that as well. In the cold weather, cold-weather shelter section for the application period, I think it needs a little bit of clarification from what Jack just said. The, the regular shelter is for a calendar year, and the, the cold weather barrier shelter is for the next cold-weather season, and so it's kind of confusing, and it looks like you could, you'd have to make an application for something that you were going to hold... you could, you'd have to make an application for something that you were going to hold over, you know, six months out, so I just recommend, if you are considering it, to change that section, to just put something at the end of that sentence that says it's for the next cold weather season between October and April.
Well, in B, it says, "In the subsequent cold weather period," isn't that defining which one it is?
B or D?
Mr. Mayor, as much as I know the council would like to have some finality this evening, and recognizing that people are here to come away with a final result, and that Jack has traveled from a different time zone to be here, I would respectfully suggest that maybe it's more prudent to really have the language in front of us, so we can come back at the next council meeting, October 8th, I believe, is the next one, with final language, as long as we get some guidance.
Formal language on that amendment only, right? Are you asking for us to quit for tonight and come back on December 8th to look at the whole amendment? The whole?
That's up to you. What I'm saying is, we're bringing up additional issues now for another look, and maybe it's best to make sure that we have everything tightened up.
Deputy Mayor.
I would much rather that we get through this one way or the other, and then circle back with any amendments that are too complicated to hash out at the dais. We have a lot of people here, a lot of people were following this.
Exactly, exactly.
So I'd at least like to get some sense of finality, even if it's not completely final.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
I've been able to modify 18100-200D, C, D, and E, to make it parallel to the other section, if you would like me to just read that language to you.
I'm seeing heads nod yes. Okay.
So consistent with the changes I read to you for 210, C, D, and E, these are the changes that we would make to 200, C, D, and E. "If more than one letter of intent is filed during the month of October, the City Council must rank all potential applicants during the first week of November, after determining a ranking procedure and considering a report from the City Manager." D would now read, "The potential applicant with the highest ranking must file a complete application and pay all applicable fees on or before December 30." E would now read, "If the potential applicant with the higher, highest ranking fails to file a complete application and pay all applicable fees by the deadline, or withdraws a complete application, or if the City denies the application, the City shall accept and process applications from other potential applicants in the order of ranking by the City Council." Both those sections would be parallel to each other with those words.
Deputy Mayor.
I would propose that in, under C, instead of mandating it, it'd be during the first week of November, because sometimes we may not have a meeting during the first week, although with budget, we generally do, but during the first two weeks of November. Just to give some flexibility there.
Councilmember Shrubnik.
Add the same comment. Yep.
Okay.
So are we back to the First Amendment that I proposed?
Looks like it.
With more clear wording?
Yes.
All right, so that...
Will you accept?
I will accept those proposed...
The City Attorney's, okay, so...
For the two separate pieces.
You want to make an amendment, then, to accept?
I'll make an amendment to accept the wording as proposed by the City Attorney.
With the change that instead of the first full week of November, it'd be the first two weeks of November?
Yes.
Yes.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded, okay. So, we are now discussing the amendment as written by the City Attorney that basically says, "Council will make the decision if there's more than two applicants, two or more." Are we all in agreement with that? Any further discussion on that? Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Shrubnik?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Herbig?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Danuski?
Yes.
Councilmember Marshall?
Yes.
Councilmember Curtis?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
All right, so, it's been amended now to, has it been amended twice or once?
Twice.
Twice.
30 to 31.
Yeah, that's right, 30 to 31. Okay, so, we're back on to the main motion as amended the changes from 30 to 31, and council will make the decision. Councilmember Danuski.
I'd like to make an amendment that cold weather shelters require sex offender and felony warrant checks.
I second that.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Just want to be sure I'm clear, so, cold weather shelters require sex offender and warrant checks?
Yes.
Uh, felony warrant.
Felony warrant. Any further discussion on that?
And the second was Councilmember Shrubnik.
Yes. Deputy Mayor.
I'll just state it, I'll be voting against this for the reasons stated earlier.
Any further discussion? Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Shrubnik?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Herbig?
No.
Councilmember Curtis?
No.
Councilmember Marshall?
No.
Councilmember Danuski?
Yes.
Passes, yes.
It passed?
Four-three, yeah.
Okay, fine, thank you. All right. As amended three different times now, require felony warrant checks and...
Sex offender.
Sex offender, and 30 to 31 days, and council makes the decision on two or more applicants.
Correct.
So it seems like that's a big enough change, probably some rewrite would need to be done. I don't think we can do that here tonight.
Yeah, I mean, was that amendment even in order without actual language?
Danuski made it.
I, that's a good point, but we've made the, we've made the amendments. Do we need to see the modified?
Mayor Baker, I'm a, I'm trying to figure out what was changed in the section, Jack will have to help me.
It would be an add, that...
An add.
Because I thought it says that that's the definition of a cold weather, so...
Basically throw everything out and start over. I mean, it's how it feels to me. We're totally changing directions from what's been approved, what's been funded, what we've done before.
It says somewhere.
So this is a totally different ordinance than we've been discussing.
So, this would be modifying section 210. But would it also be modifying section 200?
Is there something that we can change quickly tonight? I can't find it.
Well, so here's a question that I have, and the question would be, are we going back to what we talked about in July, where there's no low-barrier section? Because once we get rid of the sex offender, once we have sex offender and warrant checks, then by definition, there's no low-barrier shelter.
Extinction was felony warrant checks.
Okay.
It's totally different for all the other reasons that you said, so, it's, there's about seven criteria, and this is one half of one of them.
So would we just call the second section maybe cold weather?
That is what it's called.
Shelters?
Cold weather or low barrier.
My comment is, I think the things that we're talking about are the barriers, the warrants and sex offender checks.
You can just call it cold weather shelters.
Yeah.
That, yeah.
It's only one place.
And just as a point of clarification, in, it is in section 200, in, I think it's I, let's see, 3I is the, or, 3, yeah, 3I is the language, and it would be part of that.
Right.
Screen each potential, I mean, the reading of, in 200, it's screen each potential resident before initial admission for active warrants, this would say active felony warrants, and sex offender status, and just the rest of that sentence. So that would be the section that we would be adding to 210.
But it wouldn't be active warrants, it would be active felony warrants.
Exactly, right.
I think it's a little bit more complicated than adding that section. This is a major rework of the ordinance.
We moved, seconded, and voted, I guess, does that provide enough direction for staff to work on the language, or is that, I mean, I don't understand what the...
Councilmember Mayor Baker, what I'd like to ask the staff is, if you look at 18100-210A, at the end, it says, "The definition of a cold weather low-barrier shelter includes" right at the end of that section, "and do not screen potential residents for sex offender status or active warrants." If we added the language that Councilmember Danuski stated in place of those last words, is that good enough? Because I haven't worked closely with this ordinance, so I'm not sure if there's something else in there that's a problem.
I think you'd have to...
No, it wouldn't be good enough. You'd have to put the requirement in there to have the background checks and whatnot.
Okay, so that means, basically, we'd have to, it'd be the same process for the outdoor shelters, but it'd be felony warrant checks, not...
That's correct.
Yeah, I guess, it would, we'd have to take a look at all of this.
So then, staff is recommending that you rework the ordinance, right, and then bring it back to us?
That's our recommendation, yeah.
Are you, is council in agreement with that, or not?
Yeah. That's, yeah, if we can't get the language tonight.
As long as we have the guidance, and...
Councilmember Marshall, Councilmember Curtis, I'm not seeing any heads.
I'm neutral.
What?
I'm neutral on that specific point. And I feel pretty strongly, this is such a major change, you can't just change a couple words and fix it. So it needs to go back and think about the whole ordinance again, because we've just changed the direction. So I wouldn't want to vote on it tonight with a hasty change.
Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, I kind of feel like this is a very bureaucratic and kind of backdoor way to undo the entire intent of that section, and to essentially, you know, do away with a shelter that we've already allowed in here twice. I don't know, I'm disappointed with this, but I don't think that we have the language in front of us to actually make a decision right now.
Also, I'd like to point out, earlier discussions this year, when we had brought this up, and how we would utilize staff resources to do this, and, you know, at that time, we discussed bringing on an intern for the summer to knock this out, and here we are into October. Unfortunately, we don't have Jack forever, unless he says otherwise, so we have to consider our workloads, too, going forward, and what gets prioritized.
I think we have a couple options, I mean, one is, we can vote this down, which I don't think anybody wants to do, or we can go with the recommendation to have staff come up with some language, so, I mean, I don't see another, I don't see a third option at this juncture.
Well, I think, I don't know that Jack is necessary, it's necessary for him to come back at this point.
Oh, yeah, right.
Oh, that's a, that would be, you know, City Manager's call on the resources and who's assigned.
I mean, if there are other options, other than what I just said, I mean...
I do have a question, if there's any will to do what we discussed earlier, which, in July, which would be to vote on the first section of this, 18100-200?
I'd like to make a motion to...
But there's changes there, too, but, okay.
Well, as amended, the 18100-200, as amended? There's a...
I'll second.
Okay, moved and seconded, 18100-200. Okay, so I'm confused, since that's not mentioned anywhere, the subsections in the agenda, which says, "Ordinance number 18-0466 relating to zoning and land use controls in temporary homeless shelters and cold weather low-barrier shelters to Kenmore Municipal Code to enact regulations of indoor and outdoor temporary homeless shelters and cold weather low-barrier shelters." Where does that say anything about 18100 or 200 in passing that?
But the title of the ordinance does speak to the sections.
Right.
Can we edit the title? I mean, is that something we're allowed to do, honestly?
Yeah, you would have to, but because 200 is in this ordinance, in the packet, you can certainly vote to approve that only.
Fine.
So do we need to amend the wherethes and therefor's to make this work?
Those were the same as they were when we did not have the low barrier.
No, no, I mean, I mean, at the top, where it says, "An ordinance related, da-da-da", with sections 18, 100, 200, do we need to make an amendment to delete and 18, 100, 210, and then in the therefore, "The City Council, the City of Kimmerwijk, and do ordain that new sections, 18, 100, 200," and then will we then, in the therefore, delete the 18, 100, 210, or add it to the Kenmore Municipal Code?
Mm-hmm.
So is that what your motion was asking, Councilmember Shrubnik?
My motion was just to pass 18, 100, 200.
That's what that would do.
Was ready.
Yeah.
Right, I was just saying that.
31 days in that section, too? I didn't quite catch the 31 days, why that?
Yeah, that was already passed. Yeah, it was.
To take the chunk that we knew we could pass.
So, and I believe, to respond to the Deputy Mayor, I believe what the Assistant City Manager was saying is, if you just adopt the first section, then yes, we would, as a consequence, change the language, we would just ordain the new section, 18, 100, 200, and we'd change the title as well to not include 210.
As well as the therefor's? I mean, this is what gets signed by the mayor and approved and stamped by the clerk, and this is the official thing we're doing, is passing this ordinance that has an attachment, so that's just, I want to be clear, we're doing everything correctly.
Right, it would take out 210 from those sections.
From both those sections.
For this moment.
Right.
I just want to also be clear that we would still need to come back to the issue of low-barrier shelter, otherwise, they would be, I believe, right, on temporary use permit.
That's correct.
Yeah, so we, I think we are trying to come up with a regulation that we can live with.
Right.
So...
Okay, so, I've got here the business agenda and the ordinance that needs to be passed. I'm not to go by that anymore, I have to go by the title of the ordinance in our packet, correct?
Is your question whether the council can vote on something that is not accurately stated in the agenda packet?
Yes.
That's incorrect. I don't know how, quite frankly, I haven't even seen what the agenda says about the title, but apparently it's not the right title.
Here.
Is that what's been happening?
Here is the business agenda, and here is the ordinance that I'm asking for, right there. And I'm saying, shall I ignore that and go into the packet and read the title?
Yes.
The ordinance.
You should read the title from the actual document that is in the agenda packet, not the summary, apparently it's been misfaded.
Not what's been printed for the public, I'm going to do something totally different.
Well, ordinance 180466 is an attachment to the agenda.
Right.
Correct, online, it's just that the title in the actual agenda is incorrect.
Right.
Right.
As long as we point that out to everybody, the... As long as we point that out to everybody, the ordinance was in the packet before the public. Yeah, so I'd say, you can go ahead and, you can go ahead and vote on the actual ordinance that is in the packet tonight.
All right. So the chair will entertain a motion to adopt ordinance number 18-0466 in ordinance of the city of Kenmore relating to zoning and land use controls.
Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt you. We have an amendment on the floor from Councilmember Shrubnik, correct?
This is it.
I thought it was.
It, we already voted on it.
We already voted.
No.
We didn't vote on it.
No, we didn't vote on it, but you're, are you?
I'm reading the amendment.
I apologize, okay.
That's okay. So, in ordinance of the city of Kenmore, Washington, relating to the zoning and land use controls and temporary homeless shelters and cold weather low barrier shelters and adding a new sections 18 dot 100, 200, to the Kenmore Municipal Code to enact regulations for indoor and outdoor temporary homeless shelters.
Mayor?
Yes.
I believe that you would want to strike the words low barrier shelters from the.
And then cold weather shelters, right?
I mean, cold weather, low barrier shelters, right.
Okay, so let's try this again. An ordinance of the city of Kenmore, Washington, relating to the zoning and land use controls and temporary homeless shelters, and adding a new section 18 dot 100 dot 200 to the Kenmore Municipal Code to enact regulations for indoor and outdoor temporary homeless shelters. Period. Is there a motion?
That was a motion.
As amended.
As amended.
As amended.
I so move second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
I'm sorry, Mayor, you already had a first and a second to Councilmember Shrubnik's motion. Deputy Mayor Herbig seconded it. Are you first and seconding it again?
No, because we're reading it and we're restating it.
So you're restating it, but you don't need a first and a second again?
Okay, fine.
So I think it would just come down to the vote, to the vote or more discussion?
Councilmember Curtis.
So the, does that include the amendment we previously discussed?
Yes, it's been amended.
Where it would come to council.
And is there an amendment regarding thirty or thirty-one days also?
Yes.
No.
No.
No. That's got to do with cold weather.
Okay, I just want to make sure that all the amendments are clear to the council.
And I'm, I'm sorry, I do have one more question about what you would like to do with 18-100-200A. It says that this regulates indoor and outdoor temporary shelters, which include temporary homeless encampments and temporary homeless indoor shelters, comma, but exclude cold weather low barrier shelters, which are regulated by KMC 18-100-210. So if we got rid of that language, then this would apply to any kind of shelter, including cold weather shelters.
Well, unless you keep the language and just take out the which are regulated by KMC 18-100-210 until we have 18-100-210.
Right.
And then we can reference it.
Right.
So, yeah, as soon as we have that component, we can reference it, so.
So just get rid of that part that says, which are regulated by KMC 18-100-210?
That would be my suggestion, but that.
I don't know what the impact is.
So, there was four different amendments that were put. One of those applied strictly to 210. What were the others? The others were?
The thirty to thirty-one days, correct?
That was 210.
Yep. And Councilmember Danuski's motion, cold weather shelters require sex offender and felony warrant checks.
That was the one that we're causing the rewrite, that was 210. There was a fourth one.
It was the city council.
That's right.
Yeah.
Ranking the applications.
So this would include the city council one, because that applied to 200.
Yes.
Okay.
So, I got a question for Rod. We would have to amend section 200A that Jack just talked about that excludes cold weather, low barrier shelters.
Correct.
We would have to treat cold weather, low barrier shelters in this ordinance.
That's my, what I was just discussing with the assistant city manager. It's.
Yep.
I don't know this ordinance well enough because I've relied on Jack to understand its intricacies. So I'll have to rely on Jack to tell me if, if we just take out that phrase at the end of 200A, whether then the rest of 200 applies to all indoor temporary homeless shelters, including the ones that used to be called low barrier cold weather shelters.
Yes.
It does, okay.
Councilmember Curtis.
I, I'm just concerned that this, this ordinance is so complicated, to try to change it on the fly is a bad idea. If we, if the council's now given direction, four to three, then it should go back and be dealt with thoughtfully and make sure we aren't contradicting ourselves, partway through, and not vote on it tonight would be my, my recommendation.
I agree. So, we have a motion.
You can withdraw my motion. I mean, I, I'm happy to withdraw the motion.
Pardon me, you can't really do that.
Oh.
And when we get the full motion back, that motion will be superfluous.
Vote it down.
So it seems like we just want to vote on the.
Vote on this and vote it, if you want to come back.
Vote it down and then it'll go off and get some language.
Okay, so now we're voting on this last amendment, correct? Okay.
Yes.
Could that motion be restated, please?
Not really, because if we vote this, if we vote no, then we're.
And it comes back to us. We can then say.
Because that one passed.
Except that we still have the motion at the very beginning to approve as written, you know, and we just vote down everything?
Of all some.
So if we vote.
Yes.
Because it's too complicated to try to segment.
Then coming back to us with all of the, all of the amendments that we've added.
Okay.
Could I ask that the motion be restated by the city clerk?
The motion, this last motion, is that what you're wanting restated? Okay.
It is.
So the motion was, ordinance number 18-0466, for the city of Kenmore, relating to zoning and land use controls and temporary homeless shelters, adding new section 18 dot 100 dot 200 to the Kenmore Municipal Code to enact regulations for indoor and outdoor temporary homeless shelters, period. So the motion was just to approve 18 dot 100 dot 200, which.
And it's not to take out 18-100-210?
Well, we're only approving 18 dot 100 dot 200.
Okay.
So, by approving that, we're not talking about 210. But as been pointed out, it's much more complicated than that, because of all the little nuances that need to be changed. They've got the amendments, and so the amendments would be incorporated. So if we vote this down, that's done, but the main motion should stay on the table until we get the rewritten one. Because if we kill the main motion, we've killed the amendments.
Yes.
Yes.
And then, it would be helpful for us at the end of all that, if we could have a summary by someone, maybe the mayor, as to the direction to the staff on what to bring back next. Because, for example, a majority of the council approved the felony warrant and sex offender check.
Right.
We would need to double check that that's what you want for the outdoor shelters too.
Well, that's what we were indicating.
We were only talking about that.
Already in the regulation for the outdoor.
If we could clarify exactly what you want brought back next time, that would be great.
Okay, I think.
After taking care of all the motions.
The, the amendments that I think we want brought back are thirty, thirty-one days, the fact that council makes the decision, if there is two or more applicants, that there is felony and sex offender warrant checks, and the last one?
We haven't voted on. We haven't voted on yet.
But that was it, that was it on them.
Oh, it was four. I thought.
I think there were three before I mentioned that part of A. I think that was the fourth one we were talking.
Okay. Is that what you have?
Yep.
You have three.
I have three.
Okay, fine. So if you bring back something incorporated with those three amendments, we should be there.
But we still haven't voted on this amendment.
Pardon?
We still haven't voted on the amendment that's on the table.
Right.
And we got to vote that down.
We got to vote that down, yeah.
All right, and that leaves the, the, the main motion tabled until the next meeting. Yeah, that, yeah, that needs to be a different motion. That's in essence what that motion will do.
Let's just do this one first, I'm confused.
Clear?
Let's take this step first. Let's vote this one down.
Okay, so the motion on the, on the table was to approve ordinance number 18-0466 in ordinance of the city of Kenmore, Washington, relating to zoning and land use controls and temporary homeless shelters and cold, temporary homeless shelters, and adding new section 18 dot 100 dot 200 to the Kenmore Municipal Code to enact regulations for indoor and outdoor temporary homeless shelters, period. If there's no further discussion, will a clerk, clerk please take the roll?
Mayor Baker.
No.
Deputy Mayor Herbig.
No.
Councilmember Shrubnik.
No, although I made the motion with the intent of trying to move this part that I thought we could, but I understand the complexity.
Councilmember Marshall?
No.
No.
Councilmember Curtis?
No.
Councilmember Danuski?
No.
Councilmember Smith?
No.
All right, that motion fails. The chair will entertain another motion to table this until our next regularly scheduled meeting.
I have a question.
Yes.
So, since it's going to require some staff time, do we know the city manager will have it dealt with by then? So I think that.
Can you do it by October eighth, that's our next meeting?
It will, it will have to be done sooner than, than that to be posted, but I will recommend to the city manager that we proceed, so it can be considered on October eighth.
Okay. So if we pass this motion that says it'll be brought back at next regularly scheduled meeting, is there any room if staff can't complete it? Mr. City Attorney?
I'm checking my calendar to see when the packet is due.
It would be the end of this week.
It would be in two days, right?
It would be the end of this week to have it ready for October eighth, Friday.
Second, regularly scheduled meeting. Does that work?
For me, that would work fine.
The fifteenth.
I think if, if Jack is going back to school, then, but I mean, that means I'd have to do it in the next day and a half.
I, I think as long as we have a lot of clarity about what we're changing, I think we can do it.
Well, I think you, you, I think you got pretty much clarity on.
There's still one or two things that I'm wondering about.
Okay, let's have them.
So screening the three I. Three I.
You're changing 200 or 210?
Uh, 200. Are we changing that to felony warrants?
Three I.
No, just as it is, active warrants or sex offender status.
For, this is for the, the temporary shelter, period.
Yes.
Yeah, that should stay the same.
Okay.
But that's my opinion, any, any other?
Okay, yeah. And, and we're getting rid of 210?
No.
No.
In essence, we are, but I don't know that.
We're not.
We're changing.
We're changing.
We heard it is not a requirement.
We're adding felony warrant and sex offender checks to 210.
Okay.
So, so we are to prepare both 210 and 210?
Yes.
That was not my understanding.
That's, that's what they're directing.
What did you say?
Two hundred and 210 with all of the amendments to both sections, but add the felony warrant and sex offender checks to 210, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay. But 200 stays the same.
I'm glad, I'm glad someone else is writing this down.
Clerk, are you getting all of this?
She can always listen to it again.
Yes, this is recorded. All right. So, the chair will entertain a motion to table this until the second, next second regularly scheduled meeting.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All right, any further discussion? Clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Shrubnik?
Yes.
Councilmember Marshall?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Herbig?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Danuski?
Yes.
Councilmember Curtis?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. We are bringing this back at the second scheduled meeting, and that will be?
October fifteenth.
Fifteenth. All right. We're not done yet. Okay, next item on the agenda. Unless you guys want to end this early and go home.
I think we have to do this next one.
The budget has to be done, Mayor.
Has to go today.
Well, we have budget to do, and we've got amending chapter fifteen of the Kenmore Business Registration Program to do. All right. Yes, please. You've been so patient. Next item on the agenda is estimate revenue and expenditures for current 2017 budget and preliminary 2019 and '20 budget. Oh, this is not going to be fast.
Can we have like maybe a five minute break?
Yes, absolutely.
Please.
Let's have a five minute break.
Yup.
You're very welcome.
We're on, we're back in session.
Okay. Should, should I be in?
Yes, you should.
Okay. So, thank you, Mayor, Council. As the table attached to the agenda bill provides a lot of data on the current budget situation, the estimated projections of revenue and expenses, and the proposed budgets for the next two years, tonight I'd just like to give you a narrative overview of the proposed 2019-20 budget, which will be presented to you in more detail over the next two months. Early in September, you reviewed and approved the capital improvement program, which established the capital fund budgets for transportation and parks, surface water and facilities, and we're now ready to present the balanced operating budgets for 2019 and '20, and I'm going to take this opportunity to give you some of the highlights and changes for the general fund. The general fund proposed budget includes total revenue for the 1920 biennium of $25,877,000, which is an increase of 1.8 million or 7.5 percent more than the current 1718 budget. It also includes revenues from the incubator, Kenmore Business Incubator operation and the Kenmore Village Fund that will all be incorporated into the general fund starting in 2019. Regarding revenues, the most significant item of note in this budget is that a 3% property tax levy is proposed for both 2019 and '20. This levy utilizes our bank capacity from the period of years. This levy utilizes our bank capacity from the period of years when no tax levy increase was adopted by the city council. Currently, we have bank capacity of five hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars. Almost two hundred and ninety-five thousand of additional revenue would result from the three percent levies. And the levy, this additional levy is really key to maintaining the current level of services and programs that are expected by the community, because the budget really does not introduce any new ongoing programs or costs, and it strives to keep pace with the rising costs across the board. Also, the calculation of the property tax levy takes into consideration new construction on the tax rolls that's reported to us by King County, but it's expected to be just under one percent for two thousand nineteen and about half that for two thousand twenty. So this is the, this is actually the least amount of new construction going on our tax rolls since two thousand fourteen. So often, year to year, you know, when we adopt a one percent levy increase, that's one chunk of the, of the levy increase that we can take, and then new construction going on the tax rolls for the last few years has been very generous, but now we see that as starting to, to, to decline. However, because assessed valuation is continuing to increase substantially, especially for two thousand nineteen, even with a three percent levy increase, the tax rate will likely drop about nine cents per thousand dollars of assessed valuation compared to the rate for two thousand eighteen, which was about one dollar and fourteen cents. And the bond levy rate will also drop due to the increase in assessed valuation this year. Other important revenue sources in the general fund aren't growing substantially, and these include the sales tax revenue, which is projected to increase only about five percent over the two-year budget period, utility taxes, which we are reducing about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars based on seeing that this year's revenue is not keeping pace with what we budgeted last biennium, and development revenues are projected to be almost exactly the same as the current period. On the expenditure side of the general fund, the proposed budget is about twenty-five million eight hundred and sixty-four thousand, which is one point six million or six and a half percent more than the current period. And included in the expenditures, of course, are the six new public works positions and two upgraded existing public works positions that were presented to you previously for an approval earlier this month. You'll see the impact of those salary changes as we get deeper into the budget where salaries and benefits increase substantially compared to the current and future period, between the current and future periods. But there are a couple other factors affecting salary and benefits in this budget, and these include. Other changes to the salary and benefits include a wage, an assumed wage adjustment for January of two thousand nineteen of three point six percent, and one in January of two thousand twenty of three point five percent. The three point six percent is the June CPIW index that the city has traditionally looked for, for wage adjustments. Medical insurance premiums are budgeted to increase four and a half percent in two thousand nineteen based on AWC's trust projections, and four percent in two thousand twenty, which is my projection. And for the first time in several years, dental insurance premiums are going to increase in two thousand nineteen by four percent. This is, dental premiums are not a huge cost in the benefit picture, but they seldom change, so that's why I'm bringing it to your attention. I don't expect that they will change again in two thousand twenty. Of course, offsetting these additional staff costs and the other new public works operating expenditures is the reduction in cost due to the Lake Forest Park contract, which has been one point seven million dollars over this two-year period. And not all of these changes in public works will affect just the general fund, because a portion of not only the new costs, but the reduction in the contract is spread between the general fund, the street fund, and the surface water fund. Another significant increase that you will see in the general fund budget is the police services contract, and that's the second largest component of our budget at twenty-eight percent. The collective bargaining agreement with the Officers Guild, which expired in two thousand sixteen, has not yet been settled, and we have assumed an annual increase in wages to affect the contract by five percent in two thousand nineteen and four percent in two thousand twenty. Budget dollars have also been added for potential retroactive pay increases back to two thousand seventeen and eighteen if the contract settles soon. So over the biennium, the increase for that contract is about six hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars. So there are other, other budget highlights of interest that I included in the agenda bill for your information, and those will be presented for discussion in more detail as we go through the budget during the coming months. I also included a budget calendar for your information, and the next item in the budget process would be completion of the preliminary budget book and the city manager's budget message, which will be made available to you on October eighth. And we also plan to provide to you the outcome of the priority-based budgeting process on October eighth. Then, beginning in October fifteenth, there will be weekly budget presentations of the various city departments and the various funds, and in November, the plan is to continue budget deliberations as needed and to hold public hearings on the proposed tax levy and the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty budget. So we're still very committed to the November nineteenth as an achievable target for approving the final budget, as well as the tax levy for two thousand nineteen and any current year budget amendments. Thank you very much for your, for your time, are there any questions?
Councilmember Curtis?
I just had two. One is the Strategic Opportunities Fund. I saw expenditures of thirty thousand for nineteen and for twenty. What are those?
The Strategic Opportunities Fund is where we are proposing to make, not necessarily a long-term commitment, but for this biennium, additional contributions to ARCH, Housing Trust, and using the Strategic Opportunities Fund to fund those.
And we'll, we'll talk about that more when we get into detail.
We will.
Okay, and then the other one was the three oh two Walkways and Waterways Bond Project Fund?
Yes.
Thirty thousand revenue and fifteen thousand revenue for nineteen and twenty, and I don't understand that. I thought we took it out as big chunks, and then we.
That's solely interest earned on the money that's in, the bond money that's still in that fund.
Okay, thank you.
There's no other money coming in.
Any other questions? Councilmember Smith?
Thanks, I, I had a question. Could you repeat or at least re, read again what you said about the utility tax decrease in revenue and exactly what that was from?
Well, what we, what we've noticed with the utility taxes, which is the gas, electricity, the phone and cell, is that we overbudgeted in seventeen and eighteen, the revenue was not meeting even the budget expectation, so we have lowered our budget for nineteen and twenty.
So was it not meeting, what, I'm just curi, it seems like it would be highly predictable. How is it that we don't meet it?
Well, it hasn't been predictable because, especially the cell and the telephone has continued to decline.
Okay.
At best, stay stable, but decline over time.
I got you.
I think just the, the, people discontinuing to use their landlines and using data more on their cell phones rather than cell phones for, for talking.
Okay.
And so it's, it's been really, really hard to predict and not something that you really want to see declining.
So that, okay, that makes sense that, that the predictive, I was thinking like, I was thinking more like typical utilities like electrical and gas, since they seem more predictable, but I see the phone aspect, what you're saying, that makes sense.
Right, and, and those do tend to be more stable and increase as rates increase over time, but not the phone. We actually did talk about trying to see if there are firms available to do a, an audit. I haven't, I haven't heard of one lately, but there were, there have been in the past firms who will do utility tax audits, and maybe this is the time to take a look at those.
And what exactly are they auditing? How are they, how is that?
They would have to go back to the providers and audit their records, make sure the portion of taxes that are being collected by the providers.
I see.
Are coming to the appropriate entities, so that Kenmore would be getting its share of the utility tax. It's really difficult with the cell phones, because there are a myriad number of little tiny cell pro, phone providers, but I think if you looked at the, the big ones, the AT&amp;Ts and Verizon and, I don't remember who else, but maybe we could get to the, the bulk of it and see if, you know, we are getting, at least getting our fair share.
And is that an expensive audit to have them?
Usually those are structured in such a way that the audit firm would take a, a portion of any, any new revenue gained by the entity.
I would say it's worth doing then.
Yeah. They're often structured that ways. Because frankly, it's finding someone to, to, to do that.
Oh, that makes sense.
But we're gonna check around with other cities and see if anybody else is doing that.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions? So the chair will entertain a motion to receive and file the estimates of revenue and expenditures for current seventeen eighteen budget and proposed nineteen and twenty budget for the City of Kenmore, Washington. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
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 opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Excuse me, since I'm taking notes for the clerk, can I just verify that Deputy Mayor Herbig made the motion and?
Councilmember Curtis.
Oh, Councilmember Curtis, seconded. Thank you.
Our clerk left?
Yes, I, I told her I would.
Hear the clerk. All right, next and final. I know. Next and final, and this, I was told, will be quick, ordinance number eighteen dash zero four six eight, amending chapter five dot one oh five of the Kenmore Business Registration Program. Ms. Housley?
If, if I may present from, from my current location, this ordinance is a requirement from state legislation, which was really meant to simplify business licensing and BNO tax among cities in the state. It provides, through a model ordinance that was, that was developed by AWC, a new definition for what it means to engage in business, and it also deals, also requires cities to partner either with the Department of Revenue or file local to process business licenses. As you know, we already are in partnership with Department of Revenue to do that. The model ordinance also deals with how to, establishes a threshold for businesses that are located outside of a city to be required for business licenses. As you also know, Kenmore does not require businesses located outside of the city to get a business registration. So we, the city attorney's team has added language maintaining that exemption for businesses located outside of the cities. Cities are required to pass this model ordinance language by October eighteenth, and so we ask for your consideration and approval of the ordinance.
So are we now requiring businesses to be licensed from what I'm reading? Because we have required them to be licensed before.
You, you're speaking of outside the city?
No, inside the city.
It would be our business registration.
But I see it referred to here as licensing.
Or registration.
It's the term licensing that I'm concerned with.
It, some business, some cities use the term registration, that does not change.
Okay, so the thousand or so businesses that are registered, will they now be licensed?
They will be registered, just as they are now.
Okay. And if we don't pass this ordinance, the only thing that will happen is that we can't enforce the business license requirements.
Or registration requirements.
No, I don't see or registration, I just see the license, general business license. So does that means license and business and registration is the same?
Yes. Yeah, it's, it's, it's the terminology.
So, is there a motion to adopt ordinance number ten dash zero four six eight?
Second.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion? Clerk, please take the roll.
Could you please confirm for me who moved and seconded? You moved, Councilmember Curtis.
Councilmember Curtis moved and Councilmember Smith seconded.
Oh.
Versa, versa.
It was other way around, right?
Other way around.
Okay, all right, Councilmember Curtis?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
No.
Councilmember Danuski?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Shabnik?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Herbig?
Yeah.
Councilmember Marshall?
Yes.
Six one.
All right, staff report.
Very little to add. Rob Carlinsy will be back in the office on, on Thursday. He already has some ideas from things he's heard at the conference. Just a reminder, September twenty-seventh, the Kenmore Landmarks Commission will be meeting here to consider a nomination for the St. Edward Seminary as a local landmark, and I left the information at your, at your places tonight, October fourth, business open house.
All right. I assume nobody's had, anybody got anything to report? I'm just gonna do it that way tonight. Councilmember Marshall?
The City of Seattle has determined that they're gonna vacate a bunch of misdemeanor marijuana convictions, so we can have more information on that, look at that maybe sometime in the future.
All right, so Department of Ecology, they want somebody from the city to be on a committee meeting, on a committee that will look at the watersheds and drainage that will result in a net ecological benefit to in-stream resources within the WIRA. So its potential impacts to in-stream flows associated with permit exempt domestic water use. Anybody interested in this? Councilmember Marshall, who is our WIRA person, can't do it, so anybody interested? Yes. Maybe. It's represented from each city, so it does not necessarily have to be a council person. I know staff has got a lot to do, so.
Yeah, no, I was thinking Eric Adams.
No.
It has to be.
I think so, yes. Yes. Okay. I will leave this with the Assistant City Manager if anybody wants to consider it. If there's nothing before, else to come before us, we're adjourned.